Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, I'd like to ask you to turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any disruptions. If there's anyone planning to present testimony, please go to the sign up sheet in the back of the room. And anyone who wants an opportunity to speak tonight, for those who haven't had an opportunity to speak prior will have the time to do so, please step up to the podium once your turn. Make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature or will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement other than, if it delves into a statement on people's character. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, July the 10th, the time is six o'clock, time set for the public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Oh, yes. We do have, if anybody has hearing assistance, we have devices up here that can, that you can get to help with hearing if anybody has hearing assistance or needs hearing assistance. We will call the first, the first application.
Need to remove it from the table.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Yeah. We have some business that we, that has been tabled till tonight's hearing, and so I will accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, you've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have three new items that I don't think will take a lot of time, and we still are having people sign up, and I think the people that are signing up are for the unfinished business that we just removed. So without objection, I'll ask that we remove, that we advance to the new business and take up a couple of small issues, fairly small, before we proceed to the Power Butte Energy Center. Okay, the first item is item, I'll open the public hearing on application 04005-CUR. It's a five-year conditional use approval of soil remediation. Well, first here from, from our staff, Brent Danielson. Go ahead.
use, of the conditional use approval of a soil and water remediation facility and request to amend, two amendments. The property is located at 1100 Thompson Road and contains approximately 160 acres. The property is in the south part of the county, east of Pleasant Valley Road and south of Cunamora Road. The soil and water remediation facility was approved by the Board of eight County Commissioners in 2004. Since then, there have been a few administrative modifications approved on the site to expand the facility. In 2015, another conditional use and master site plan was approved on the property to operate a private septic disposal facility. One of the terms of approval from the last administrative modification is for the board to review the staffs of the soil remediation facility every five years and consider amendments and additions for approval. The applicant has requested two amendments. The first, the first amendment is that the applicant would like for the board to admit or amend condition number 24 for them, to allow them to remediate any compatible non-hazardous material. The second amendment is requested by the applicant relates to the use. The site is 160 acres, and since 2004, they have only utilized 33.7 acres thereof. They now intend to utilize the entire site as originally permitted. As part of the review, staff sent out notice to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property, informing them of the review and the public hearing. There were no written comments received for the review from the public. In addition, staff sent out requests to agencies, neighborhood groups, and political subdivisions, soliciting any comments, concerns, or issues regarding the operation of the soil and water remediation facility and the applicant's proposed amendments. None of the agencies that responded raised any objections to the current operation of the soil and water remediation facility or raised any concerns regarding the applicant's proposed amendments. Staff finds that the application applies with the county code and comprehensive plan, and I'll stand for any questions.
Yes. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Give us your name for the record.
My name is Brad Richardson, and I'm here on behalf of the LNR Group.
Okay.
We, if, what you'll see there is there's a copy of two different reports. One is the LNR report that was previously submitted, and as well as a copy of the staff report that was previously mentioned here. Connection with this application. While you're looking at that, today we build on the work of a father and son who began their journey protecting underground storage tanks and performing related leakage cleanup at places like gas stations. They saw a big contained as conditional use permit to run PCS through a land farm. They found other waste streams with the same issue and obtained permits to handle and remediate those too. The rest becomes an incredible story. Tonight, we'd just like to ask the commissioners to approve the two key amendments to what assessed for LNR's use, but at the time, it was determined not to use those acres until more development, development was needed. And so that's the first part of what we're asking to have done. We also take this opportunity to provide just responsible environmental solutions and has been at the forefront of environmental innovation since its inception. The key here is that LNR knows that disposal is a dead end, but that remediation and, and take them and, and further their use through the process. Today, consistent with the county's permitting, LNR manages through innovative processes various waste streams, including wastewater, brown grease, and even milk products. LNR employs approximately 40 impressionate chemists in Meridian, Idaho. The lab pictured on page four of your report allows LNR to analyze waste quickly in order to determine whether LNR may accept it. This occurs even before the waste arrives at the facility. Significantly, LNR does not take waste at its facility until after it's been analyzed and LNR knows it's safe. If you'll look at page five of the report, it appears to be ordinary dirt. However, these are images of petroleum contaminated soil filled with micro, microorganisms. As part of this remediation process, this dirt is spread and tilled from time to time depending on whether it contains gasoline or diesel. Continuing with these waste processes, wastewater remediation consists of a multi-step approach using a series, a series of evaporation ponds. If we had time, it'd show you pictures of the ponds that are located there where solar distillation occurs. During this process, waste solids accumulate at a box of two dump boxes. Pictures of the waste pond and the dump boxes are on page six of the report in front of you. These waste solids are removed, placed on a concrete pad, and thereafter taken to a disposal facility. Next, on page eight of the report in front of you, this captures the oil, the used oil reclamation apparatus. LNR remediates the used oil, and thereafter a customer transports the reclaimed oil off-site for, again, beneficial use. And then on page nine of our report, that's showing about brown grease. LNR created this solution to produce feedstock because there are very limited places in the Treasure Valley that can accept grease trap. In fact, your typical restaurant cooking french fries in oil now will have a place to take their waste product. LNR processes even allow the remediated brown grease to be used off-site to produce biofuel. On page 10 of the report there, you'll see the redlined area that depicts the entire permitted area. Since 2004, when the permit was issued, LNR used only a portion of this area. This presents an exciting opportunity for LNR and for the community. LNR is ready to continue expanding its remediation treatment areas. Although it appears to be allowed under the current CUP, we bring this in front of the commissioners tonight in order to maintain open communications, transparency, and to get ahead of any potential concerns. As was previously mentioned, the staff report went through the process and found no issues with what took place. In addition, with respect to inert waste, the DEQ has also provided no objection to what's been proposed. Therefore, we would ask tonight that you approve the application, and we look forward to providing.
You indicated that DEQ, what, what is the exact involvement of DEQ in terms of the whole process of review, et cetera?
Great, that's a great question, thank you, Mr. Daly. In the report that the staff generated for you, I saw in their letter, and the letter actually is dated May 20th, 2024, so that would be partway through this clear packet that you have with the clear cover. It says Exhibit 13, one of four, it's about, they don't run sequentially, but it's about an eighth of the way through. That letter there, the DEQ specifically said that they cannot consider a project on a project-by-project basis, but that they can provide overarching guidelines for facilities such as LNR's. What I would note in that letter is that there's no objection or discouragement of what has been planned here through, through, from the DEQ.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just following up on that, have you had any environmental issues over the last five years?
We've had, previously in front of the, the, this Ada County, we did have some odor issues that go back a few years ago. My understanding of those odor issues is that those have been remediated. In the last several years, there haven't been any public, that to my knowledge, any public comments or questions to the county that's been made available to us. I'm aware of one neighbor that has come directly to LNR and talked to them, and that those issues have been worked out, but besides that, it's been very successful in using these ponds for remediation. And I, I think the key point here is we're trying to change the way things are done environmentally to use the product that comes in to generate something good going out, if that makes sense. We, we could continue just to be a disposal site where it's a dead end, so to speak, and things just sit there. But I think the goal is now to take it to a new level and actually be able to use something on the back end.
Doesn't look like you have a lot of close neighbors.
That's correct, yeah, most of them, I mean, this is, we've been using approximately 36 acres, now we want to expand that to, you know, 136 acres, so there's, there's a lot of room for LNR to work out there, and the other neighbors are quite some distance away.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a couple of signups. Reagan Handy? Speak on this issue? Okay, if there's not, do you have a, you want, you want to include some documents in the record?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number 26, and then the report, and that was exhibit number 24, which was the report that they went over with you just now.
Application 04005-CUR. Hearing being closed, it's now in the hands of the board. What do we say?
Mr. Chairman, based on the, I think they're one environmentally sound in what they're doing, it's being monitored by DEQ for all of that, and so I think it's, it's good for, for the community as well as for them as a business. So I, my inclination is to support the, the extension of the application.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I'm inclined to support this.
Okay, is there a motion?
Therefore, I move to approve the application. Let's see, zero, file number 04005-CU-M-REVIEW.
Does that include the two proposed amendments to the conditions of approval?
That's in the staff report, correct, Brent?
Yes.
Right, I'll second that.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Now, we have, I'll open the public hearing on application 2024.
All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Brent Moore with Ada County Development Services. Before you is the zoning ordinance map amendment to expand the Boise area of city impact by 596 acres, a comprehensive plan map amendment to assign new future land uses to the property, and a zoning ordinance text amendment to reference the new boundary and future land uses within Ada County Code. Boise has requested additional land located east of the Memory Road, I-84 interchange, approximately one mile south of Columbia Road, be added to its area of city impact. So on this image, the solid white line shows the existing area of city impact boundary, the dashed line shows the properties to be added, and the shaded properties are, are land which has already been annexed by the city of Boise. So the western 517 acres are owned by Micron and are located directly south of other Micron property on which their campus is currently being expanded to accommodate a new microchip fabrication facility. And the 79 acre parcel to the east is also owned by Micron, and it is requested that it be added to the Boise ACI so that it can develop in the future within the city of Boise. And this map shows the future land use designations proposed for the property and how they would relate to surrounding properties. Micron has requested the land south of their campus be designated industrial in order to support temporary construction activities related to their current expansion and allow for additional expansion in the future. And it is requested that the 79 acre parcel be designated planned community so that it can develop in the future along with other property Micron owns to the north as part of a larger master plan development as visioned within the Boise Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds the application to be compatible with the goals of the Ada County and Boise Comprehensive Plans, as goal 2.1C of the Ada County Comp Plan is to periodically update ACI agreements with cities based on recent growth trends and availability of adequate land supplies to meet anticipated growth. And the Boise Comp Plan includes goals to coordinate with Ada County regarding expansion of the ACI boundary south of the Columbia area, reserve the area surrounding the current Micron facilities for future high-tech expansion, and develop the East Columbia area as part of a large master plan community. No concerns or comments in opposition have been received. As detailed in the findings of fact, staff finds the application to be in conformance with state statute and Ada County Code and is recommending approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also voted unanimously to recommend approval at their hearing on May 9th. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for our staff? No. Okay, is there, is the applicant here ready to present?
Mr. Chair.
Do you represent?
Ada County is the applicant, so.
I know, so you represent the applicant?
Yeah.
All right, good enough. All right, do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to testify?
Do you receive any signups?
All right. All right, then I will close the public hearing on application 2024-00499 CPA-ZOA-ZC, Ada County Development Services. And any comments from the commission? Seems to me like, like, like the city of Boise and others have made a proper application, and this will benefit their application and with their expansion. Is there any other discussion?
No.
We're ready for a motion.
Well, the city, the city as well as the business that's involved in this have, have sufficiently outlined it in terms of their needs to us, and I think it's a good application.
All right, any other comments? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve application for project number 2024-00499-CPA-ZOA-ZC, petition for Ada County Development Services based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, contained in the staff report, and the discussions we've had.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00569 CPA-ZOA, Ada County Development Services. We'll hear from our staff first.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, in this instance for new business item number three, staff is requesting that this be tabled to the September, let me take a look here, September 18th, public hearing.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to table this application till September 18th, 2024. Okay, I'll accept the motion to table this application until September 18th, 2024.
To September 18th, 2024.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. This application is not tabled. So, we now have before us the unfinished business, which was properly removed from the table at the beginning of the meeting.
Those were the lines?
Yeah. Okay, and so, it's now still, it's an open public hearing, and so, we will continue to take testimony, that's the reason it was to receive more information or more testimony. And so, the process that we'll use is we will accept public testimony from anyone that didn't get this appeared on the, on the folder, is that not correct? Yeah, all right. And we wish you to limit your testimony to three minutes and try not to repeat others' testimony. And it's perfectly in order after I call your name to stand up and just say you either oppose or support the application. That way, we have your designation, we have your name on file, we know what your wishes are, and it's on record. And that worked fairly well.
No, Mr. Chair Commissioners, you don't.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we'll start taking testimony. We have allowed people, we have, how many do we have online that wants to testify? It's part of the applicant's team? All right, so we'll wait for them to testify and rebuttal then possibly. All right. Okay, the first person we're going to-
If anybody wants to sit down.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hi, I'm Shane Buse. I'm here to testify in favor of the solar project. I've lived here in this valley since 1959 and been engaged in farming. I've also been taught all my life that truth is the knowledge, well, get the facts. This project presents less risks to an individual than driving here tonight, or getting on a boat, or a horse, or motorcycle. There's been a lot of concern about people expressing the risks that this project presents for their families. This project, in my opinion, does not affect the beautiful view coming into Melba. If you drive down Southside Boulevard going into Melba, there is a fantastic view. The solar project is pretty much to the north and behind that view. Some have expressed a concern that it couldn't be turned back into farm ground after perhaps 40 years of solar use. Well, this ground was in sagebrush for hundreds of years. I don't understand why it couldn't be returned to farm ground after 30 or 40 years of solar energy development. In regards to the water aquifer, the ground that's involved in this project uses approximately 20 millions of gallons, 20 million gallons of water per day during the irrigation season. That water will not be used for the solar project. We had some of our, a good portion of the property that we own for sale for several months. It was with a reputable real estate company. We had absolutely no offers. It's been talked a lot about how this is all prime farm ground. Some of it is very good farm ground. Some of it is very marginal farm ground. This property is owned privately. It's kind of interesting, all of a sudden, it's Idaho's farm ground, or my neighbor wants to claim it as his farm ground. I don't know where they are at when it was time to pick rocks, fix the water on a Sunday morning, or bail hail all night. It is our farm ground, and we feel like private property, we have the right to do with our property as we desire. Taking our property out of production will not affect any other feedlot or dairy operation. We've recently sold our cows, and the feed that is produced on our farm, it will not be missed by, we utilize all of the feed in our own operation, which is going to stop. Looks like I'm out of time. Closing, if Savion lives by the, and abides by the laws and regulations, there's very little or no risk to the people, and I respectfully ask you to support. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one up is Brian Merrill. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brian Merrill. I live at 1901 West Buse Road, and I work for the Buse family, Shane, who just testified, as one of the parties selling, selling ground to Savion. I'd like to use my time to refute a few of the emotional pleas that have been made previously at the public hearing. Firstly, many have claimed that the solar panels are dangerous to the environment and the soil. Every day, as I drive from my house in South Kuna into town, I see homes, barns, structures, et cetera, with solar panels on them. Seems that those living under or near those panels feel safe because the solar panels are not dangerous, not to people, not to animals, not to the environment. Second, I've heard numerous emotional pleas that solar panels are unsightly, will reduce the quality of life near their, near their homes. No fewer than two of those who have previously testified, neighbors and my friends, testified against saying that they're unsightly, have solar panels on their home covering the entire roof on the south side, or on their barn covering the entire roof on the south side. They have no issue claiming that it's unsightly for others to have panels, but for them, it's okay. Additionally, I feel like Savion has gone above and beyond to accommodate the visibility requests and impacts of every neighbor near the project. They're even offering a 400-foot setback near all residences, which is more than a football field before you see the first panel. Previously, investment group on 900 acres of the ground that's being offered and had intentions to build housing developments. I much prefer a solar panel to maintain the rural feel of this area of Idaho over housing developments. Third, some farmers and dairymen have testified that the farm ground is premium, good farm ground. I can only speak for the 1,200 that we farm, some's good and some is bad. There are large outcrops of lava rock that can't be farmed, there's shallow soil, there's poor irrigation lines, there's steep terrain, there's power lines that run through the property. Some of our farm ground is good, and some of it's very bad. Additionally, as Shane said, our property is listed for sale with no offers, 900 acres of it. Fourth, there's some concern that converting this ground will impact the dairy industry. As Shane said, all of our farm ground feeds our cows, and our cows got sold, lots of them today. So, there's no impact regionally or locally or regionally. Fifth, many have claimed that the use of this land will destroy or impact negatively Melba, the seed capital of the world. None of this ground used is used to grow seed, seed or seed crops. This ground is as far away from Nampa and Kuna and Melba. Lastly, some have suggested approving of variants for this project contradicts the county comprehensive plan. There may be some there, there may be some there, there to this claim. Where we once farmed is covered with homes and commercial buildings. If that beautiful farm ground can be developed and covered, surely this less desirable farm ground that's ours variants in the associated plan this evening. Thank you.
Any questions to that? Mr. Chair? Brian, go ahead.
Well, I guess, so you, this is a very rural part of Ada County, the Kuna-Melba area, but the rural part because of the influx of homes. This is not near Melba, it's on the north side of Melba. There are some Melba addresses that touch it.
There are a few kids that live in, are surrounding this project, go to the Melba schools. Like I said on my, it's that far away from Melba. As Shane testified, it doesn't block any of the view that is premium in Melba of the Oihees. It's all, it's all behind you when you're looking at the Oihees. Well, then, if there were, you know, some nature and a lot of solar panels, in my opinion.
So, you describe people as build any consensus on this project?
So, I probably know 50 people in this room by name, go to churches towards them. I feel like the hyperbole that's been shared in some of their testimony is emotional, and I don't think these decisions are emotional decisions, I think they're factual decisions. I think that there's a few Realtors that have started a kind of a Facebook group that are rallying the troops, that have been spreading ideas, values, and it has going to ruin the community, and on and on and on, and the dust and the fires and the batteries. And I think that from what I've seen, what I've read, the company proposing the project, Savion, has complied with all the state agencies. All the state agencies recommend approval of the variants. They've provided a plan, every plan's been requested, and to my liking, they've been satisfactory. As long as there's an enforcement mechanism within the county, I don't see why, why the project would, would impact the community other than having to see solar panels, mostly from a distance. But I think there's only six homes that touch the project, and then there's others within a short range, but it really is as far as you can get from Kuna without going to Canyon County, as far north as you can get from Melba without hitting Nampa, and it's way out of Nampa. So, it's right on the electrical grid, and it was built to inject power right at that point. It's ideal, the ground is all together, it's private property, I think it, I think it, I personally, another thought that comes to my mind, as just listening on the radios I came in, of the Lava Ridge project. This is not the Lava Ridge project. That is, that was opposed by state agencies, that was opposed by senators, that was opposed by a huge, but a huge group of the approving authorities, and was being pushed by the Biden administration. This is not that. This is not, this is not a Biden green energy mandate. It might satisfy some of their itches, but it's not that. It's a private, private contract. Idaho Power is begging for the power, it's going to provide enough energy for 45,000 homes. Would it be better out in the desert? Yes, but that's not on the main line, that's not where you can put the power in the grid.
How many, how many people do you think will be affected by the view where it's at?
What does it mean to be affected? How many will see it?
Well, if you're, if you're, if you can see it from your property.
I don't know, maybe a few hundred. The panels will run north and south, so anybody that lives north of it won't get reflection because the panels will be either facing east or west. And anybody that lives south of it will have minimal reflection at all, ever. So, really, if you're coming from the, from the east, it's a few dairymen, and they don't really live on the dairies, they just have employees that work at the dairies, so there's probably three or four houses on the east. And on the west, I think as you go down the hill, there's a few more homes that will, that will see it as you go over the hill in Canyon County. But on the Ada County side, it's very, very minimal, in my opinion. You'll see it, you'll see it as you come, come on Kuna Cave and Southside and Robinson. But with the setbacks, I don't think it's going to impact the homes that are nearby.
Any other questions from the commission? I just have one question. Mr. Buse, who was up here before, and you said you're sort of associated with Mr. Buse, has sold the property to Savion?
It's, it's under contract, it's not sold.
Oh, so-
So, Savion has purchased a portion of the, of the farm ground that Bill Gates owned. They have not purchased two of the other properties but are under contract, to my knowledge. I shouldn't speak for them. But it's under contract, they have the option to buy the remainder of the property.
So, if I'm, if I hear you correct, then the, is there a condition on the, on the sale of the contract?
They just have to want it, that's all.
Okay.
So, if they want it, then they'll close on it, if they don't want it, then they won't, they won't close on it.
All right, well, good enough. I don't have any more questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Elias, there's three listed on here, is there anybody else that's online that wants to speak besides the one that's going to be a rebuttal?
There is only that one person.
Okay, now, do I have these in order of?
Let me go through that, Chairman.
Okay, because we want, we want to, we want to give those that sign up first, the first opportunity to speak.
This is everyone, this set is from the last hearing, and then all of the newspapers are from tonight's sign-ups.
Okay, these are from tonight's?
The ones in the front are from the last hearing sign-up that we didn't get to.
Okay, all right, good enough.
Okay.
All right, we have some pages here that attended the hearing in April that didn't get a chance to testify because of time constraints, and so, we'll, we have two at the first of the list that did testify, so we'll start after them. Is there two Kirk Boskets?
Oh, he's gay.
Okay.
My name's Kirk Boskett, I reside at 6120 South Robinson Road in Kuna. I also have here with me Rob Frank, who I would like to have assist with my testimony.
Okay, you've got three minutes. All right, thank you.
Ada County Commissioners, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Rob Frank, I am a Commissioner-elect from Harney County. I, solar projects come through while I served on the Planning Commission, so I've, I've done extensive research into how they can affect a county government and a local community. I also have a BS in, I don't think we have time to get into the weeds tonight about whether or not solar farms are a viable, sustainable energy source, or the potential biology and drainage. I think the key issue at hand is the fact that they're not making any more land, and the particular land that we're talking about here in your beautiful Treasure Valley is some of the most productive land in the United States. In fact, in the Western creation and improving the tax base. When they construct the solar farms, there will be an uptick in jobs for a short duration to build the farm, but once it's installed, it takes relatively few FTE to maintain and manage the farm. The solar land will be taxed differently than farmland, but I think we've got to keep in mind a pretty widely accepted statistic. Every dollar generated by production agriculture, busheries, equipment, and other goods and services within the community. The odds of this land ever being put back into production if it's taken out are fairly slim. I do understand that America of ag land, when there may be more suitable sites in the county, although those other sites may not be as profitable to the solar development firms, I think it would be in the better interest of the community. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got one question.
All right.
Is Parma County one of those counties that wants to join Idaho?
Oh, I don't know if we can get into that. How do you feel about that?
That was just, that was a question to you and not to me. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's fine. And listen, do you have any?
I have, what's, and how many years ago, and what's now the result of that?
Yes, sir, it was about five years ago, and we had at least four proposed sites. Two of the sites were right next to each other, different landowners, but it was all part of the same project essentially, and that was on a scab rock flat out in the desert. The most intensive use for that was cattle grazing, and honestly, when you drive by that one on the highway since they've installed it, you don't even notice it. Another one of the sites, which I did oppose a bit on the Planning Commission, was in a little valley that hadn't been farmed for probably 30 years, and so, sagebrush had come back in, and they weren't currently irrigating it, and so, the commission as a whole deemed that that was acceptable, and they did install it, and, and honestly, it is a bit of an eyesore to the, the neighboring houses around it. The, the fourth site was on a piece of ground that is in our meadow, we don't have as fertile of land, but we have mostly native meadow grass there, and there was one area in that parcel that was alkaline and had poorer soil characteristics, and that's what they thought would deem, deem it acceptable for the solar project. In our comprehensive plan, it clearly states that the land classification has to be five or above to be considered for putting in a utility like that. Land class four and below would be prime agricultural land. The, the deal with that parcel is, is right next to the substation, and so, obviously, if you're developing, you want to put it as close to your transmission point as possible, and in flat land is better. As it turns out, they have not been able to put that one in because we don't have the transmission capability out of our valley, we don't have the big lines to take any more power than we're currently generating.
So, your, your analysis of the experience there is mixed, or for, against, in terms of the community, as well as the benefit to the community, as well as reception by the community? There now, actually, after having five years of experienced it, what does the community think?
I, I think that we did have to be very careful in looking at which ones to approve, and it is really tough to weigh with private property rights, because I do believe a person should be able to do what they like on their own property, but when you purchase a piece of property that's zoned as farmland, you have the expectation that for your life, that's all that's going to be around you. And if we change zoning, which sometimes we have to do to accommodate growth and different needs, then that affects all of the property holders around you. We did see an uptick of jobs, most of the construction jobs that came in were from out of area, and as soon as the project was done, they were gone. So, it hasn't created a lot of jobs, and because the scope of the solar farms that- a lot of jobs. And because the scope of the solar farms that we saw put in was so small, I wouldn't say that it was a huge net positive or negative for our county.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we have Dustin Ferdinand.
I've already spoke. I closed.
Okay, Brent Matthews.
Sounds like the individual's out of town.
Rebecca Coulter.
I don't think they heard that.
Okay.
Can you repeat the name, Mr. Chairman?
Rebecca Coulter. John Post? Past? Royce Post.
You're going to have to call that out.
Are you Jason? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As Ms. Owens brings up our exhibit, I think she added it as Exhibit 75 following the last meeting. And I'll ask her to go ahead and just move to the second slide when she gets to it. A quick introduction. I'm Jason Mau, Parsons Bailey &amp; Latimer, 800 Main Street here in Boise. I am representing the Robert and Karen Nichols and their family. They opposed this. I asked I'll ask your indulgence as I believe I got this presentation down to about four minutes, but I'll go through it quickly. And once she gets this up, that will be helpful. On page two are some pictures. Then turning to page three, it shows the Nichols' location in relation to this project in Ada County. It's right in the middle of of the project or present in the county code. And that are there to meant that mean to protect them as a community members and property owners here in Ada County. And that you continue to seek to uphold the goals and policies reflected in the This is in an area that they've lived and farmed for over 50 years, producing crops that support the ag theater, the big picture, as they don't wish to see what they rightfully call a glass desert on these about 2,400 acres. They want you to consider the cumulative effect of losing grounding areas. They also want you to consider the health and safety for all neighbors. And they want to remind you that the so-called proposal to graze sheep is dissimilar to the historical ag use here. Their location right there in the middle. And then page four, the next one, as we outlined in our letter that we submitted, that included all our legal arguments in our objection letter highlighting the shortcomings of the application. And as to the applicable environmental laws and the issues preventing this board from weren't appropriately addressed on slides five and six, we'll go ahead and skip to slide eight. Then just to close and wrap this up, I just want to state that the code and and the community at large are free to thrive. Incidentally, the nothing illustrated best in the pictures that were used for the notices and the staff report. The aerial photos there is used, it showed on the slide here. It shows life, the green irrigated prime farmland, which is very contrary to the corresponding picture and figure on the other side. The site plan showing gray, that glass desert. They the rest of the slides include the Nichols' written comments. And we thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Yeah, go ahead.
So our our staff, you know, concluded that this meets the comprehensive plan definition of preserving farmland. And you're saying you disagree with their analysis?
Yeah, and that was on the one slides. And in our letter, too, there were several sections that we had indicated that it seemed like it was just kind of a checklist on their proposals that they'd gone through and just, you know, looking at definitions broadly and not really addressing the actual things that are considered in the plan. And and that's lined up, you know, in our objections. And we kind of flesh that out a lot further than the staff does.
Give me your best one sentence summary of why this is against our comprehensive plan relating to preserving farmland.
One sentence, you tell attorney to limit to one sentence, you know. Put that in four or five pages, I think. You know, in our objection letter, starting in section C, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pages on that. And I would just ask that you you review that before you make a decision.
Okay, go ahead.
You're in your list there of items, one was comprehensive plan that Commissioner Davidson said, but the other was Clean Water Act. What is your analysis of the Clean Water Act?
So that, just in the application that was presented, just again, it's just kind of the quick kind of check the box on those things. And I think especially with recent decisions, the Clean Water Act, you know, with the US Army Corps' role in such permits that are that would be required on some of this property related to the drainages. We think that the jurisdictional issues that that the US Army Corps, the engineers would have to would have to address on the need for a permit, I don't think that they go into it enough and that they they should have addressed that a lot, that determination a lot more, I guess. And so just for the for the overall application that needed for the Clean Air or the Clean Water Act in the end, I think it was just leaves a lot to be still determined there.
Even though it's groundwater, it's not surface water, and you would actually be using less pumping water out of
Well, yeah, and I don't think that's that goes to the jurisdiction issue. I think it's, you know, and I'm not the water attorney in our in our firm. So I But it has to do with the the main how it drains and drains and everything. And so I don't want to speak any further. Yeah, I'll get in hot water there.
Yes, and you do have, well, this is a staff question. So when he's talking about the letter, that's in our file already? He's not he's not submitting new information? There's nothing new in your information that has
Correct. That was that was presented before the first hearing, our letter. Yeah.
That's what I I thought that was the case. I just wanted to make sure. There wasn't something you were giving us additional to that.
No, thank you for that clarification.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Christian Vanderwood. Christine Vanderwood. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is Christine Vanderwood, or Vanderwoody, if you want to go with that. I live at 4250 West Kuna Road, which is on Kuna Road between McDermott and Robinson Road. I have lived and dairy farmed in the area for 48 years. And I would ask you to deny this conditional use permit. I feel like it appears that Savion is clouding the issue with a lot of reassurances, kind of like the farmer's son who comes home from agricultural college confident in his superior knowledge and challenging his parents every decision. Soon, the son discovers that many of his theories don't play out in the real world. Where was his college? Iowa, where they don't need irrigation? Washington, where animals need protection from the weather? Or a small solar project in Ohio where the average annual rainfall is 32 to 42 inches? In other words, theories only get you so far. The experience of his father learned over many years now makes a lot more sense. The land involved in this project is currently good, has been submitted into your record. The signatures represent 379 collective years of experience in Ada and Canyon County. They state that grazing sheep is a poor exchange for the crop cultivation takes on this property is experimental at best and will be financially unsustainable, will state. However, the construction of the project will strip away the healthy topsoil. The remaining soil will be hardpan and need careful rehabilitation over many years to make the ground useful for agriculture. These crops will take time and irrigation, which I sense Savion has yet to figure out how to do. This is a case of the theory sounding good in Ohio, but not well thought out in arid and high desert Idaho. I urge you to listen to those who have lived, farmers and the landowners of the area. Savion lacks this experience. Sometimes dad has to let his son make mistakes in order to learn. But this is not the time nor the place. Don't let Savion
About the most mom testimony I think I've ever heard.
Please, please, please prohibit your your applause and so forth.
But the applicants have stated that they've tried to sell this land before, and they haven't had any offers. So doesn't that sort of lead to the conclusion that it's
Will back up what I'm saying now. And I don't really want to steal their thunder. Is that fair to say?
That's fair.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Shirley Ritchie. Sandra Ferguson.
Thank you for your time and and attention on this matter. It's very important to all of us, really, one way or the other. I am located directly adjacent to the north end of the project along Robinson Road and the North Power Lateral. I didn't find out about the project until just before the last meeting. So it was kind of kept a secret from me, even though my fence line basically is adjacent to the canal and my property. I'm requesting you vote no on the proposed power boat powers Butte Solar Farm for the following reasons. The comprehensive plan for Ada County and Canyon County conflict with this proposal. According to the Local Land Use Planning Act, any development must align with the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, and protect critical environmental features and agricultural lands. The proposed solar farm occupies an extensive land area that potentially conflicts with agrarian uses and open spaces that the comprehensive plan aims to protect. Section 8, 5B dash 5 print B of the Ada County Code contains a required finding for approval of a conditional use application that the proposed use shall not create undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties. When there is overwhelming opposition to a project by surrounding property owners, the question of whether an undue adverse impact exists, since otherwise so many people would not be alarmed, and raising objections to the proposed change in use. The harms to many of the residents are close enough to the proposed solar project that the views from our homes and our properties would be negatively impacted. Such a development would forever change the character of the area and the lives of so many families. I look out my living room window. I'm 40 feet from where their diagram shows there's going to be a huge fence, and then they're going to start doing the solar panels for 2,400 acres. I'm right at the top of the hill. Then this project is on the top of the hill, and then everything goes downhill on both sides. Despite claims to the contrary by Savion, the environmental contaminants in solar panels are well known and easily identified. Our groundwater supply and domestic wells in the area are shallow, and contamination could easily leach into these areas. California was recently on the news.
If you could wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Okay, I'm almost done. California was recently on the news, and disposal of these panels has been and continues to be a major problem. They're losing a lot of the solar. They were they were frontrunners. 20 years ago, they they started doing solar. And it's it's mostly residential, as opposed to a solar farm like this. I'm not opposed to solar. I have solar on my house. And it's not always really, it doesn't work well in the winter. When you have snow, when when we have the temperature inversions that we have.
All right, if you could wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Any questions for?
Okay. So I'm just asking you to please vote no on this variance.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Laura.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Schankel. I live at 7255 Stagecoach Road in Melba, Idaho. I grew up in this valley, and I love this valley. I don't love speaking in public, so I'm going to do my best. I've also crossed out several things that people have covered, so I'll try to sort through my notes. I grew up in this valley, and we raised our kids here. We raised our kids in Kuna and Melba so that they had an opportunity to raise animals, to do 4-H and FFA. Our commute to work over the last 20 years has increased from 30 minutes to over an hour each way. But we do that because that sacrifice is worth it to us to live where we live. To be clear, it was not depicted in the presentation. At the last meeting, there are hundreds of homes who can see this hill, who view this hill and surround this project. Asking people to accept that the term agrivoltaic means that this project will conform to the surrounding landscape is like asking us to believe that placing a recrivoltaic farm in one of the beautiful parks that we enjoy would conform to that landscape. Imagine if someone told you that they were proposing to put solar panels on all 153 acres of Ann Morrison Park and all 41 acres of Catherine Albertson's Park. Both parks would be covered in solar panels, and they would create new walking paths around the posts of the solar panels and plant trees in between the panels. They would even put ponds for the ducks and jungle gyms for the kids in the shade of the panels. It is just as doubtful anyone would accept that that would be the same landscape that they had had in the past, just because the term included recr. You will be able to see this project for miles as you drive in any direction from Nampa, Kuna, or Melba. I would argue, rather than what someone said earlier, that it is not on the farthest outskirts of these three areas, but it is centrally located to all three. Lastly, I just want to pose some questions for you. Is there a better location for this that will impact fewer people and not take thousands of acres of productive farm ground out of commission? Would you be in favor of this project or a project like it if it was bordering your property or someone's property that you care about? If you remove the amount of money, they will If you remove the amount of money they will save because they want to construct it near a substation that exists currently, does this location really make sense? Has anyone who has spoken in favor of this project been someone who is not going to benefit financially from it? And if there is no agreement with Idaho Power, do you know if the power will stay in Idaho? And if not, why would you even consider that aspect of it? As Ada County Commissioners, you have a responsibility to do what is best for the county. In closing, you have a responsibility to do what is best for the county and the people who live here. The priority should not be to save a multimillion dollar or billion dollar company a few dollars at the expense of people who already live here. Please remember that the people of this county voted for you because they believe and trust that you will protect them and do what is best for them and not what is best for someone out of state. There was a room full of people in April, and there is a room full of people tonight who are asking you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Connie, G. Connie Runia.
Lots of vowels, Runia.
Okay, Runia. I tried. Thank you.
My name is Connie Runia. I reside at sixty-three twenty-four Bennett Road, and I can see where the project will be from my front porch. So, but it is quite a few miles off, but the people here are my community, and I'm a practicing attorney in private practice in Nampa, but I'm here as a community member. I've crossed out most of the comments that I had, but there is one thing I wanted to bring up that I haven't heard much discussion on, nor have I seen much about this on the materials that are posted on the various websites. And that is the disposition or the dismantling of the project. You know, what happens five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or thirty years? We've talked about the lifespan of the panels being thirty years, but that doesn't mean that they won't become obsolete. Technology could change, they could be damaged, hail dust, all kinds of damage. So what happens with the panels? What happens with the land? What happens with the project in that regard? What if the subsidies that are currently just flowing through this particular industry's dry up or change? What if those kind of requirements are different? Will Savion be around to make sure this thing is dismantled properly? Will they be there to ensure that panels are properly recycled? Or will Ada and Canyon County have an extreme issue with landfill being filled with solar panels? Residentially, I believe most solar panels, because the cost of recycling, are going to end up in our landfills. Commercially, twenty-four hundred acres worth of panels in our landfill, you can see we're talking about millions of tons. And it may not be, it may not be thirty years from now, it may be sooner than that, is what I want to pose to you in your consideration. I'm hearing a lot of reassurances from Savion as part of what, how they're positing it, how they're framing it. As an attorney, I don't believe the reassurances. I'm cynical about that. Who's going to enforce those? What if they go out of business, bankrupt, whatever? Are they going to be here? Just in closing, I just want to say that I recently had the opportunity to speak with a client who's a farmer in Malheur County. Oregon is learning lessons that we need to learn here. He farms next to a fifty-acre solar panel farm, and his biggest issue with the farm, I asked him, is weed control. What's happening is that with the difference in temperature near the solar panels, he is finding that the weeds are different from what he's used to battling, and they're also more difficult to control. They're sprouting earlier, maturing earlier, and it's changed his whole, his weed control program on his own property based on what's happening under the solar farm. I ask you to protect the interests of the people here on the zoning that's in place. This is agricultural land, and no appropriation of agricultural language is going to change what's happening with this project. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So a question for staff. My recollection that Savion's supposed to have a decommissioning plan as part of their application, did you want to mention that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Michaela respond to that.
May I sit? Or?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, yes, they are required as a condition of approval to have a decommissioning plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Ferdinand, twenty-four nineteen West Heron Loop in Nampa. Born, raised in Canyon County, but did spend a lot of time out this way towards Ada County when they would let us. My testimony that I turned in, I'm going to shorten because a lot of people have hit the comprehensive plan, and my thoughts were, here we go again. The federal government grants millions of dollars to do energy projects that are environmentally attractive but destroy farming communities. This is the case with the Savion Corporation's proposed project, you know, next to the family farms and dairies in Kuna and Melba. You know, this does affect Ada and Canyon County, and we get to pay it back with, you know, what it costs us in our taxes as well. The zoning change requested by this conglomerate would remove productive agricultural land forever and create a toxic waste, from what I read, which would not be accepted in any of Idaho's landfills. And that must tell you, it needs to be, you know, probably a ways away, maybe on BLM ground or some ground that's outside of the area. Of course, Savion Corporation can see that the Melba Substation would be a great place to put it. It would just, we're not sure just where the power would be. From Idaho Powers' comments in all of the community meetings we've had, they do not have a contract in place, and obviously, until this gets through the process, they're certainly not going to do it. To answer Commissioner Davidson's question, when you have a piece of ground and it's for sale, depending on who's selling it or what zoning that they put on it, that would also determine, wanted to be the, one of the determinants to decide who would purchase it, what would they purchase it for? And of course, that's why they're asking for a zoning change. The comprehensive plan, well, I would just say, the Power Butte Solar Farm is promoted as valuable, however, the specific proposal does not align with Ada or Canyon County comprehensive plan and would could potentially harm the community more than benefit it. And of course, take away that agricultural designation for the land. And here again, private property rights are on both sides of this boundary, especially those that have to live around it and are not selling their property to the highest bidder. Please deny this proposed site and require the alternate, an alternate site aligned more closely with the comprehensive plan and the community values. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brad. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and this opportunity to speak. My name is Brad Husingfeld, representing the Idaho Conservation League as its Energy and Regulatory Council. Much of the testimony I'm about to give reflects the writings of my colleague, Adrian Gallo, who holds a doctorate in soil science. ICL prepared and submitted, or written comments and submitted them today, but was informed kindly by staff that it was not timely to enter your record today. ICL supports the Power Butte Project. As we do with all matters, we independently arrived at this position after reviewing the program, or proposal. We encourage developers to consider, address, and communicate potential environmental impacts and social concerns early in development. ICL is facing a wave of permitting projects across the state. It's new to our work, but rapidly expanding both on private and public grounds. This is an area that we are learning rapidly. So far as we are concerned, Savion and the Power Butte Project has done an adequate job of presenting community concerns and addressing them appropriately in its proposal. I'll speak briefly as much from my experience as an energy advocate practicing at the Public Utilities Commission. Energy development is necessary. Local and regional energy systems are facing a new period of growing demand. Routinely, utilities select solar and storage projects as the least cost, least risk, most reliable, and safest option to satisfy their burgeoning resource needs. Without projects built in a timely fashion, the region is at risk of a destabilized energy service. Many comments have been raised in this meeting and the previous one held on May fifth, or May eighth. I'll address them briefly. Commenters raised concerns about the potential health effects of water contamination of solar projects. There's no substantiated evidence to suggest that solar panels, batteries, and associated infrastructure have negative impacts on human health or water. While typical panels do indeed contain heavy metals and potentially dangerous compounds, they exist in de minimis quantities. Potential harmful contaminants are also highly immobile. Studies show that when panels are pulverized and exposed to successor weathering and leaching cycles, the material remains non-hazardous and immobile within the panel matrix itself. Lastly, we recognize concerns about displaced agricultural lands. Preserving productive open space remains a core concern of our organization and a reason we, and partially a reason that we support this citing decision. Landowners at the May eighth meeting and today before this commission testified that the land was not arable and was of marginal use. Soil maps of the area support this conclusion. Publicly available soil profiles from the USDA Resources Conservation Service show that shallow restrictive layers in many rockout crops and highly alkaline soils. We hear calls to protect prime farmland, but the soil lower the site is located would be seriously restrict productive agriculture. As the commission staff presented it to the record, the project fits within the county's comprehensive plan. We reviewed and agree with their assessment. Energy projects will need be built, and it's important to cite them appropriately. We believe this project conforms and advise you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
What about the concerns with the battery fires?
Battery fires? They do happen. The lithium ion technology does catch on fire occasionally at a very, very, very minimal rate. You know, there are reports early in the development, and continually, battery technology is improving rapidly. I don't know the technical details of the ones specified by Savion on this project, but you know, reading reports from across utility pages and the planning cycles, it's a marginal concern and one that can be addressed through mitigation and appropriate response plans.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just as a follow-up, the Idaho Power indicated, at least to us, to me, that the answer to battery fire is let it burn. So is that, you say, is environmentally sound answer to that question?
All things in perspective. Yes, I mean, they're deeply concerning, battery fires do happen. The nature of them, they're a chemical fire, so putting more water on a lithium battery is harmful. So, so far as I understand it, projects are engineered to separate the batteries from a possible spread of that fire, and their best practice really is just to let them burn. I used to work in hazardous ways for mediation. Secondary containment is the primary way to stop most accidents, and I reviewed briefly like the project plans, and it seems that they are conforming. These are known problems and addressable by the industry.
Even the smoke from them?
Pardon?
Even the smoke from a burning battery that could be months, days and months?
I couldn't speak to that. It's outside my expertise. I haven't read on that particularly.
In terms of, because you mentioned that there's no environmental or health, that was your testimony, that there's no environmental or health negatives for the project, or a project like this?
I'll qualify that. Every project, every use does have potential harms. It's all about weighing risk, you know, and I do believe that Savion's proposal has addressed them appropriately. It's tough. There's no great answer. There's trade-offs, there's balancing, there's consideration. It's something that, if it was an easy decision, we wouldn't be having-
Because your organization is a nationwide organization and-
Nationwide.
No, I mean Conservation League has affiliates and others.
Employees are based in the state, funded primarily through memberships, some grants, and all the rest. So we are independent.
So the question then is, if any of your affiliates with the Harney County individual, experiences in other places, have you had information from other places that would dovetail with your analysis?
I'll speak from two sides. So, one, as a conservation organization, we're wrestling with these questions. ICL has been about preserving public in a lot of ways, and the utility system requires it, and so we're seeing it come through. And so we are grappling with how to protect public spaces, open spaces, all the rest, wildlife concerns, and with how do we best make that be compatible with what we are seeing as a wave of inevitable, not optional, inevitable energy development in the state. It's hard. It's saying no to a lot of things for very long. We're having to get to yes, and it's through processes like these, it's through examining the permits, and it's through taking public input. I think it's all valuable.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So does your organization support solar panels on public lands as well?
With manageable, mitigable impacts to wildlife, all the rest, social values, and return value to the county, we would support. Absent those things, we have opposed and do oppose many communities, organizations like ourselves. We pass along phone numbers as often as possible. So we have a long history of working on public lands, and we see energy development coming.
May or may not support a proposal to put a solar farm on BLM land, you just, it's, you can't say for certain one way.
Not all BLM land is created equal, just the same way as not all private land is created equal. There are case-by-case situations, and a lot of it is nuanced in between. We try to afford individualized assessment of each project before coming out with a stance. So, square miles are the same, and so we try to look very closely before we make a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Chairman, pardon me, before you, it feels like you're moving through that list from last hearing pretty quickly. We have a short list of folks that we believe may have left, sorry, not for this gentleman, may have left a little early at the, or not early, I mean, we were all here pretty late, but may have left and not had a chance to speak. They weren't checked off on the list that you had. I've got nine folks here. As you end the list of the folks from the last hearing, you may want to call these individuals to see if they are here, and I can bring that forward too.
Okay. These people that were here last time.
Descended last time, but didn't testify. They left the hearing as of later.
Okay. All right. All right, we'll ask these people. Jim Hopkins. Sharon Carroll. Ben Grofs. Evan Dunn. Okay, we'll get back to the other list then.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dana Henness. I live in Kuna, and I agree with a lot that's been said tonight. I oppose this kind of a different nature. I do agree that some of that prime land or agricultural land is being kind of taken over by a possible solution of grazing sheep, which doesn't seem to fit. But I've had kind of an experience over the last few months that I don't think anybody's touched on about the solar industry. I put a lot of money into the solar on my house back in November, December, and the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, approved Idaho's powers, Idaho Powers' proposal to do- Public Utilities Commission, approved Idaho's powers, Idaho Power's proposal to do the net metering, which then took a lot of our generation and the buyback and the supposed renewable energy that we're going to help provide back into the system and cut the credits back a lot. So in other words, what we were going to get last year and what we get this year are not the same. They're dramatically less during three quarters of the year, except for 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. from May to October, if you can generate after dark, they allow us a higher energy factor. However, and they did this in California last, or a couple of years ago, and within the first year, the article that I read said they dropped their solar installations 86% that first year, which means that it's not economically viable to put the solar panels on the houses. And yet, that's a good use of space. The problem that I see is if we're trying to promote renewable energy and we're trying to help provide more energy into the grid, and what Idaho Power wants, I mean, I should say Idaho wants to do this by 2045, well, shouldn't they be promoting residential and commercial use of that space on the roost in order to generate that extra capacity that we're all looking for, not private businesses from out of state? So we're being taken away from as private individuals that are trying to supply. I don't feel that solar energy is a bad thing. I just don't think it's a big business item here that they're pushing, not a private or what we can do as people or businesses or put it over parking lots, so many other places that we can put it that it's more appropriate and useful than agricultural land. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, all right, thank you. Linda Charters?
I oppose this project, and I've lived in Melba for 50 years and...
Ma'am, you can only say yes or no. If you've got to say anything more than that, you've got to come up to the mic.
No.
Okay, thank you.
From Idaho. First of all, I've lived there quite a few about battery fires. The experience that individual expressed, oh, Melba had battery fires at a substation just three miles out of town, and it took three weeks to clean that up and jeopardized every fireman and every resident with 100 years of sagebrush. That's what this valley was, 100 years of sagebrush. I remember when the state fair was right out here where DEQ is built now. Relatives talking about moving into Melba and how their relatives moved into Melba. My relatives came into, you look around today, the last several years, there have been a lot of changes, a tremendous amount of changes. I'm opposed to the project, and you can also preserve the aesthetics of Melba, the community. That's what you can do by denying this. Thank you for your time and your patience. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail McCormick?
I oppose. I went this side. I really oppose.
We can't hear you.
Undecided.
It's Desiree Jones. I live in Kuna, Idaho. Here today to express strong opposition to the proposed solar power development in the South Kuna-Melba area. While concerns are multifaceted, ranging from the loss of valuable farmland to environmental impacts and hazards associated with such a development, I'm here to discuss personal implications. I'm concerned about the loss of quality of living for myself, friends, and neighbors in my community. My family and I currently enjoy a view of farmland from our hilltop residence. Allowing construction of massive solar structures would not only rob us of this view, but also subject us to the loss of equity in our home being significantly devalued. For most people, their home is their greatest investment. As many studies have shown, including the research from University of Rhode Island highlighted in the Providence Journal, properties near solar installations can experience significant decreases in value. For instance, homes within a mile of such installations saw prices drop by 1.2%, while those within a tenth of a mile experienced a 7% decline. This trend underscores the real tangible risk for our property investments and the broader community's economic stability. Corey Ling, an environmental and natural resource economics professor, found that some of the largest impacts were in communities where solar projects were built on a farm or forested property. In those instances, housing prices within a mile of the array dropped by 5%. After analyzing thousands of properties in the cells of Rhode Island and Massachusetts over a decade and a half, economists at the University of Rhode Island have concluded that solar development is having a negative impact on homes. They looked at how prices changed before and after installation of the project and found that property values within a mile declined on average $5,741. It's not a large number, but the loss value totaled for all the properties in the solar installation climbed to $1.7 billion. Scott Millar, Director of Community Assistance and Conservation at Grow Smart Rhode Island, a group that is calling for the restrictions on solar development in open spaces, said he wasn't surprised by the findings. Many homeowners have been asserting that their property values would be negatively impacted by solar utility, excuse me, utility scale solar, and the study confirms it. The loss in home value will not only affect the resident, but also the tax revenue for the county. There's been other decisions made. A solar permit was denied in Amahurst County in February 2024. One of the supervisors stated that the view shed was an inherent right to be protected and preserved. This factored into his vote for denial. This has happened over multiple places and throughout the country. A property owner's rights should not infringe on others' rights. Solar installation is an industrial electrical plant and has no place in rural agricultural zones, localities.
If you could wrap it up?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say that in conclusion, we can acknowledge that we have the need for growth and energy development. I believe that the proposed location is not suitable for our local residents, and I urge you to prioritize the voices and concerns for our local residents over the out-of-state interest of corporations. Please consider the concerns of the people living here. Our rural communities are integral to what makes Idaho a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What was your citation again for the, regarding the home prices near solar farms?
Sure, that was a study done by University of Rhode Island, highlighted in the Providence Journal. I did submit the references if you want. I can give you, here's a copy of it. This was submitted off the email last week.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead. That's one. Do you have anything closer to Idaho?
There, there's a handful of different things without going through my notes.
Or in the West?
I believe there's some in California.
Thank you.
Becky Alder, Alder from Melba, 1,000 acres of agricultural land. In a maze of LLCs over 22, they found that land was purchased through other names that don't say his name, which include Bora Peak Farms, Oak River Farms, Cottonwood Holdings. The common factor that ties these together is an address in Lenexa, Kansas. Oak River Farms is tied to him. Chief Legal Counsel for Oak Ridge Farms is Clay Powell, Clay Powell signed. The Oak Rivers Farms, some of these records were sent to you. But I also want to move on to that currently my husband and I are farmers in Melba, and we grow seed crop. They grow seed, they grow crops for cows. You cannot plant seed crops next to field crops because they will cross-pollinate. That ruins the seed crop. I would guesstimate that if we used their land to grow seed crops that we currently grow, our crops would increase. They have amazing land, maybe not all of it, some of it is rock, but I really think some of the land we use now is sandy and it doesn't grow great seed crops, but we grow it. And they stated earlier that they didn't get offers on their prime farm ground. I think they mentioned that it was a couple of months they had it listed. You cannot list property worth millions of dollars and expect for it to be sold that quickly. I do have a real estate license, and I know some of these things that kind of happen there. As far as the battery fires, I wanted to say it is never not windy in Melba. If there's a fire, that smoke does not go straight up in the air and then come straight back down. That will spread miles and miles. That concerns me greatly, and all that stuff will come down in the rain, and it will land in our farmland, and then it will become part of our crops. So whether that happens or not, that concern is huge to me. It's also my understanding that the land we're speaking of tonight, there are currently a group of people willing to buy that land and continue to keep it as farmland. I don't know why the push to make it solar, I don't know if they're getting more money than they would if it was sold as farmland, but this would totally, this, to me, the idea of putting solar panels over marginal farm ground, everything in Melba is considered marginal. There's the seed crop company we grow for. They've tried to grow in England and South America, and they've never gotten the quality of seed crops that we've gotten in Melba. And again, I would just say, if we were to farm their land and put seed crops on it, I think we would do better than we actually do now.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Esther Hoglen, and I live at 7021 Bigfoot Road in Melba. That's exactly four miles north of Melba. It's on the corner of South Side and Bigfoot Road, which is right across the street from this proposed solar complex. It's at the top of a hill. My view out one side of the house certainly is the Oihees. My view out the other side of the house is Mr. Buus' field. The debate tonight is not over the need for more power or whether solar is a viable option or not. The fight is over the location of the facility. There's thousands of acres of desert not far from here that solar can be placed on where there will not devastate an entire community. Just because our location is monetarily cheaper does not mean that it's the least costly option. The cost to our homes, our livelihood, our safety, and our community is beyond measure. Please deny this proposed site and require that alternative sites align more closely with the comprehensive plans and the community value. My concern, my husband passed away last year. I don't know how long I'm going to be able to live out there, but when I get ready to sell my ground, certainly like Mr. Buus', I'm going to want to get as much as I can for it, and I have a home in two and a half acres there. That's about all I have to say. You have any other questions?
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Madeline Schnapp, and I welcome the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you for letting us come and express our concerns. I'd like to, I oppose the application of the Power Butte Energy Center for three broad areas of concern. Technical, I have technical concerns, I have cost concerns, and I have environmental concerns. So unlike traditional energy sources, solar produced electricity is weather-dependent, and perhaps during the summer, solar is probably an adequate source of electricity, but during the winter, we have long periods of time when we have weather inversions where your electricity output is zero. And the claim that this is going to provide energy, electricity for 45,000 people may be true at the peak of summer, but it's certainly not going to be true in the winter. And I've spent a lot of time looking at the Energy and Information Administration data on solar output as a function of climate, and there's a huge variation between the two. So I would like Savion to sort of give us information about, you know, what the seasonal variation of their electricity output would be. Solar panels obviously provide zero energy at night. It's highly dependent on whether or not they have some sort of backup. Now, electricity, battery backup today is our short-term batteries, not long-term batteries. So if you have a weather inversion that lasts, you know, four to seven days or over a week, you're not going to have any sort of output at all. Short duration batteries make solar highly vulnerable to weather conditions. Cost concerns. As the poor performance and high cost of solar energy becomes apparent, additional backup sources of power will be needed. Solar requires battery backup, and battery backup at grid scale is enormously expensive. Grid scale energy is being propped up by massive federal subsidies. What happens when those subsidies begin to decline or go away? And we're left with shouldering the true cost of solar electricity. The large costs that might come to Idahoans would probably not be something that would be appreciated. Solar panels and batteries have relatively short life, so the claim is these panels are going to last for 30 years. I challenge Savion to show me a 30-year-old solar farm that has 30-year-old batteries. So what's the true, you know, what's the truth in that? And then if they're only going to be lasting five years before they need to be replaced because there's a newer and better model out there, what do we do with the waste that's going to be produced? What about environmental, excuse me, the use of heavy subsidies to mask the true cost of solar energy coupled with the fact that traditional sources of energy are being punished with restrictive regulations and high taxes by design is intended to starve the system? Solar energy is not clean. Let me get that straight. It depends...
Did you wrap it up?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
We already talked about, the one thing I wanted to say about solar fires, there is a case study down in Mossland. It had three separate instances of fairly large fires that closed down a highway for multiple days and sent people, people were... Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you, John?
President, I oppose.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Aiden Schingler, and I'm a resident of both Ada County and Canyon County. The property closest to the solar farm is on 6896 Stagecoach Road. The proposed Powers Butte solar farm simply put is an outrageous demand for Idaho's farmland. I personally don't think that much of it until I, I personally didn't think much of it until I saw how big the houses and roads. As a child of America, I would like to request you to take my future in consideration. As House Spoil 608 was January 25th, 2025, sorry, and it protects our land, specifically farmland, well, Powers Butte wants to ruin it to become a solar farm. Well, and the biggest motive behind it was to protect the farmland for the future of America so that we don't have as much of the road construction as well as house developments as we've been seeing a lot of. I beseech you to oppose the proposed Powers Butte solar farm and... I beseech you to oppose the proposed Powers Butte Solar Farm and for my future and Idaho's. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the House bill number?
House Bill 608.
Okay, thank you. Avery Shingler?
I oppose.
Rudy DeWinkle?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a dairy farmer. I own a dairy farm a couple of miles north of the proposed site. And I wanted to speak tonight in opposition. I am, as a dairy farmer, opposed to it because I feel like it will negatively affect a lot of dairy farms. As you well know, probably Idaho is famous for potatoes, but milk is our number one ag commodity. And I have served in some capacity with Idaho Dairymen's Association for over 20 years. I currently am one of the Board of Directors. And for the first time in 20 years, the Idaho Dairymen's Association decided to actually hire our lawyer and write a 40-page letter to you guys why we are opposed to this thing. And I know Commissioner Davidson is probably going to ask why we believe it will negatively affect us, and that is because the number one expense on a dairy farm is buying feed. And this land is currently growing feed for dairies. And dairy farms in the Treasure Valley in general have been a dying breed. There's several local farms that went out of business here in the last year, year and a half. Legardio Family just went out, Boschman just went out, Darryl Robertson just went out, Jay Capini just went out. All Ada County dairy farmers. I believe in preserving Idaho's agriculture. I believe in helping out our number one ag industry. I can fight with emotion. My living room windows will look at this hillside. I don't want to see panels out my living room windows, but I know your job is mostly to hold true to the Ada County Comprehensive Plan. And that plan, specifically, I think its goal, 2.5C, asks you to preserve irrigated farmland. And this land is currently irrigated and whatever form of agrivoltaics they want to use will require the removal of very expensive irrigation systems. You cannot grow agricultural viable land without irrigation in that area of Canyon or Ada County. Looks like I'm almost out of time, so I will stop there. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I guess I would ask you, you know, why can't you or a collection of dairymen, you know, try to purchase the land and maintain it the way you want to maintain it?
I would love to be able to purchase the land, and if I had the money, I would. And so would a lot of other farmers. We're a dying breed for a reason. It's supply and demand. Idaho's milk is being a cheese state priced on the Chicago Mercantile Exchange. We receive Class III milk prices and for several years. And just six years ago, I bought the dairy farm that I currently own from a widow wanting to, and she was literally in tears when I agreed to buy that farm because she wanted to see the dairy industry continue to thrive in South Nampa and Melba. And so I guess that's the best I can answer your question.
Well, you kind of make it sound like the industry as a whole is not, you know, being profitable or, I don't know, just my concern is, I mean, is this, this an industry trying to, you know, just continually prop itself up on the backs of, you know, the abuses when maybe in the future, you know, we're going to lose all these farms anyways?
Well, I think many of us, especially in the Melba community, would certainly hope that we don't lose the farms. And there are a lot of us that are striving to make ends meet on our dairy farms and pay the bills and feed the cows and take care of the cows. The price of land and the price of irrigation and the price of buying feed for the cows is not always an economical thing, which is sad. But it doesn't mean that we don't desire to be food producers and take pride in what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ann DeWinkle?
I oppose.
Josina Vanderweig?
Hello, my name is Dr. Josina Vanderweig. I am a large animal veterinarian. I live about five miles north of this project down Sileside Boulevard. I have practiced for six years, mainly doing sheep, goats, and cattle. I have practiced here in the Treasure Valley for four years now. I'm going to touch on a couple of topics that I researched in opposition to this project. The first one being a study done at the place what would be compared to Idaho as we are in a high desert region. This looked at reduction of non-beep pollinators after the construction of the solar farm there and it's not a bee that would potentially pollinate plants. Being that we are in a seed valley, this should be a cause of concern and something to look into. Which article that the solar panels could provide too much cover for the ground to allow natural rainfall, to provide soaking of the ground, to allow in the reduction of rainwater in the ground in that area. So if you're going to plant pollinator plants without irrigation and rely solely on rain, I think that's going to be a little bit of a disappointment. This is also going to allow for fire. The next topic that I looked into was the grazing of sheep under solar panels and also I touched on some heat stress with sheep. There was a couple of studies that I found that talked about sheep grazing and the benefits. One that kept popping up was done in coastal California. That was only 16 days long and they had to supplement with hay. So I don't know how that was published. It was a pretty poor research article. If you, September, extreme heat is 86 degrees. If we look at the heat island effect that raises temperatures about four to five degrees Fahrenheit, we're looking at six months of the year, these sheep are in extreme heat stress. This is great concern for the sheep. It's, will shorten their lifespan, it will cause immune problems, reproductive problems stressed, especially prey animals like sheep. They tend to group together, which I have seen that sheep will lay on top of each other and kill their. As you can see this week is some record-high heat temperatures. This is something to keep in mind if they are under solar panels, under, in this heat island. There is one thing that mentioned that the backside of these solar panels were 30 degrees Celsius higher than the ambient temperature, which causes me to think that maybe this is an oven effect underneath their solar panels. I think, you know, these are things to keep in mind for the animal of the sheep and also how plants will-
Andrea Morris?
I oppose.
Nancy Stagg?
I oppose.
Scott Robinson?
Thanks for your time. I'm Scott Robinson from Kuna, Idaho. I'm not a farmer. My dad was. He was an alfalfa seed farmer in Marsing, Idaho. So I'm here to support the farmers here. These people here are the stewards of the land. I heard that gentleman talk earlier about taking care of the land. Well, if these people don't take care of the land, we don't grow food and they don't, we don't get fed. So that's the bottom line. They have to take care of the food or the, of the land. Also, I know it's been talked a lot about, I was a former firefighter, so as far as these fires go with the batteries, they're very toxic. The hazmat afterwards of disposal is huge. If you don't, if you look in California at the boneyards that are left from the solar panels, the batteries and these wind farm propellers, it doesn't, it's not cost-effective to pulverize them like that gentleman talked about earlier. That's, that's on the backend. They've already made their money. Speaking of that, Bill Gates, we've heard about that already, but he's behind a lot of it, of this right now and a lot of what's going on in farming. And I believe it's a war on farming. And you only have to look at the La Verge project, the 500,000 acres over in eastern Idaho that they were shutting down the water rights to, our Director of Resources Weaver was doing, saying it was for future generations. But we have a Kaiser Mining Company over there out of Australia that's mining the cobalt and the lithium used for these solar panels and the batteries. They ramped up the day before that was issued over there in eastern Idaho. So it might not be Ada County, but this is just one more piece of ground or big piece of land that's being wrapped up by people like Bill Gates that gets our taxpayer monies as a subsidy. And then on the backend, they don't care about this. And if you don't believe me, listen to him because he's a depopulationist and he doesn't want to feed people. He wants to see our population go down. So if you want to look into something, I'd look into Bill Gates and what, and what's going on. If you look at the history of this too, the World Economic Forum, if you look at what's going on over in England and Denmark and in those places, they're shutting down farmers. Farmers over there are throwing manure on the parliament buildings and Capitol buildings. They're fighting for food, for people. And if you don't think this affects us, it does. It'll affect us and it's going to continue to go this way unless we stop it. So also, I just wanted to mention, I was given this from a nice lady here, 200 signatures from the first petition. Then on the second one, 866 petitions online in support of the farmers. Plus, there's five sheets from God and Country Event, and then these signatures right here. So I'd urge you to do some research on who's behind this and what's going on. Another, one last thing, there's an Iowa carbon capture pipeline going on right now. They're capturing CO2 and they're pumping it into the ground, saying it's for the climate. What makes plants grow? What are the three things that make plants grow? Sun, water, and carbon dioxide. Without those things, you don't have plants. You don't have food and we don't have farmers to grow those food, that food for us. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you. Gary Mingres?
I oppose.
Kimber Kessler? Jessica Fisher?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Jessica Fisher. I live in Melba at 8286 Perron East Way. And I oppose the proposed solar farm. Sorry, I have notes on here, one second. First, I'd like to start with, my sons asked me when this started to become a thing that everyone was hearing about, why I would oppose solar. Because in raising them, I have tried to teach them to be stewards of the earth, to recycle, to use alternative energy when we can, and to care about our future and what energy and all of the things that we do, the impact that it has on our earth. I told them that I didn't oppose solar itself. What I opposed is a large company coming in to make money on solar. There's a big difference between using solar to create power for our communities and a company coming in to earn money and make money off of a large tract of land. Whatever the uses the people that own it wish to use it for, it shouldn't be used to impact the people around them. I believe that we could use solar panels on existing structures, which the heat and all of the problems that you would see with this large-scale solar farm would be minimized because it would be a smaller tract that would be used to power the home and any power beyond that could be sold back as people do now. That would be a wiser use of solar panels. As for statements that other people stated earlier, that it was just real estate agents make, getting everyone riled up, I disagree with that. I believe it's about the people living in the community and caring about their community. And the piece of property that is in question isn't just a flat piece of property that you would drive by and have no view of. We actually live to the lower side of that hill, which we would have a view of all of those solar panels. It would change our view completely. It is a hill that we can see from the Melba Valley and it is only four miles from Melba. It is not a long ways from Melba. And the hill makes it much more viewable than a flat four miles. And this hill, once it becomes unwatered, dry and feral for all intensive purposes, those, the weeds, the cheat grass that would grow underneath it would increase the risk of fire. And that power station with the batteries there would be at an increased risk for fire. So yes, in closing, I oppose.
Okay. Any, any questions? All right. Thank you. Dusty Arndt?
Oppose.
Don Lindsey? Lori Thornton? Lane Thornton?
Good evening. Lane Thornton, where I live on Swan Falls Road in Kuna. I'm also, I'm also, I'm a farmer in the area and my father and grandfather as well, were in farmers in the area. And I guess I look at this maybe just a little bit differently. You know, to me, about 20 years ago, you know, this valley changed. You know, it changed from a, you know, as a farm community. You know, Meridian just had their dairy days and I'm trying to think if there's a dairy left in Meridian and I'm, there probably is, but I don't know where it is. And so to me, this, the community is, continues to change and it continues to, you know, be not, to me, not so much a farming community. You know, I also look at this, that, you know, our farm on Swan Falls Road, there's a farm on the west side that is for sale and there's a farm on the east side that's for sale. And both of them are about 600 acres. And I'm fortunate that we have two sons that want to stay on the farm and continue farming, but these two farms don't. And so what, you know, what it, what's in their future is that they, you know, they have to sell, you know, they sell the farm. You know, they either sell it to a farmer or they sell it to a developer or, or some other type of use. And I, to me, this, it's kind of ventures into property rights and, and you know, what's, what's the best use for the land and the value? You know, I think any of us here, I think if we, if we want to buy something, we try to buy it for the least that we can. And if we want to sell something, we try to sell it, you know, for the most that we can. And I would like more than anything to own both of these farms on each side of me, but economically, you know, farming, it's, it's not there anymore. And, and one of these properties has had a couple of things that, that's possibly going to purchase it. And one of those was a solar farm. And then one of them was a, to put it out, a development. And I, living next to it, I would, I would much rather have a solar farm than I would have a development and lots of people to, to deal with. And so therefore, I, I signed up as neutral and I just kind of see this a little bit differently, you know, maybe within the valley. You know, I'm, I'm a farmer to begin with, but also realize that, that things are, are changing as well. You know, it's, it's getting harder for us to move equipment and sometimes it just scares me to death as we move from one place to the next, you know, just hoping that we don't have an accident and it involves somebody, that somebody gets hurt. And now those things are, as the valley grows, you know, it seems like we're not going to be able to stop that, that those things become more of an issue. So I thank you and if there are any questions?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tina Van Valet?
Oppose.
Joe, John Van Valet?
That was close. Oppose.
Scott Laidlaw?
Opposed.
Theo Levitt?
Oppose.
Cory Cook?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Cory Cook. I live at 5540 Wayne Lane, Nampa, Idaho. I farm and ranch, just a small-time kid trying to grow up in the Melba Valley area. My parent, my grandfather's been there a long time. I currently run she- I currently run sheep for livestock. And I think that the livestock industry, especially on the sheep side and the energy, can come together and create something unique where we can coexist together versus having two thousand houses built throughout this project, possibly. They say that there's issues with fire hazard, water. I just disagree with all that. We can work together. There's irrigation to where we can supply pasture, even raise a few crops possibly on some of the open ground that doesn't get developed into solar. And chemical-wise, I can take care of chemical-wise with just proper range management, running sheep and livestock on that accordingly. So, I vote in favor of this project for Power Butte and Savion.
Do gentlemen have any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Evans from Meridian. I'm going to be reading from a study that was done in Science Daily. Copper cannot be mined quick enough to keep up with the U.S. current policy guidelines to transition the country's electrical and vehicle infrastructure to renewable energy, according to a University of Michigan study. The Inflation Reduction Act, signed as a law in 2022, calls for a hundred percent of cars manufactured to be electric vehicles by 2035. But an electrical vehicle required, requires three times, three to five times as much as copper as an international combustion engine. Not to mention the copper required for upgrades to the electric grid. A normal Honda Accord needs forty pounds of copper. The same battery electric Honda Accord needs about two hundred pounds of copper. Onshore wind turbines, turbines require about ten tons of copper, and in offshore wind turbines, that amount would be more than double. Said Adam Sidem from University of Michigan, professor of Earth Environmental Studies, we show in the paper that the amount of copper needed is essentially impossible for mining companies to produce. The study examined a hundred and twenty years of global data from copper mining companies and calculated how much copper the U.S. electricity infrastructure and fleet cars would need to upgrade to renewable energy. It found that renewable energies' copper needs would outstrip that copper mines could produce at the current rate. The study, led by Simon and Cornell University researcher Lawrence Kathlis, was published by the International Energy Forum and discussed in a webinar, "Copper Mining and Vehicle Clarification." Electrification, sorry. The shortfall is partly because of the permitting process for mining companies. The average time between discovering a new copper mineral deposit and getting a permit to build a mine is about twenty years, according to Simon. Copper mined is more than a hundred, by more than a hundred companies operating mines in six continents. The researchers drew data for global copper production back from the year nineteen hundred, which told the global amount of copper mining companies had to produce over the next hundred and twenty years. I only did, I only printed out the first page of that, but it, but if we don't have enough copper to make solar panels, these wind turbines and all that, silver is also used in solar panels. Silver is much more rare. And in your iPhones, your Samsungs, or whatever you have, you have silver in there. All of your appliances, all of your automobiles, everything has to have silver and copper, and we don't have the natural resources on earth to do this and to keep these projects That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Buse. I am an owner of the land proposed in this site, for the solar site. There's been many, many false claims made, even just tonight, but also in April, and much hysteria, half-trues, even outright lies, lots of hyperbole. So I thought I'd just touch on a few things that have been said since my husband spoke and try not to say what he said. One thing I noted is, there's a lot of talk about taking this land out of production. Well, it's coming out of farm production, but energy is a commodity. And on days like today, isn't it nice that we have a secure source of electricity? And solar helps with that. This project, and as already been stated, will help, will give power to over forty thousand homes. And if you think of the average home with four people, that impacts a lot of people. Another thing that was mentioned that wasn't really true, or maybe, like was previously mentioned, there's risk to everything we do. These batteries, yes, occasionally, very rarely, they catch on fire. They do burn themselves out. There is no risk, these are put on a cement pad, there's no risk to the whole mountain burning up. And I can say pretty, pretty unequivocally that every farm in Melba and Kuna has either a propane tank, a gas tank, or a diesel tank on their property. Also, highly flammable, but when properly taken care of, they're safe. Also haystacks, and the cheat grass that grows around everyone's field, highly flammable, but when it's properly taken care of, it's safe. So to say that we can't do this because maybe there'll be a fire is pretty hyperbolic. Some of the claims made just tonight, that this will devastate our community. I've been a member of this community for forty-five years. I wouldn't do anything that would harm our community. Drainage problems? Twenty million gallons a day have not caused a drainage problem. So I'm not sure where they got that idea. This farm has been only for sale for two months? Wrong. Absolutely false. That's not true. In no way will it harm the community or wildlife. As a matter of fact, there's some wild turkeys that roam around this area. This fence will fence in the turkey's dinner and fence out their natural predators. And topsoil stripped away? How would topsoil be stripped away? So all this, these unsubstantiated claims are, to me, ridiculous. And since when is it wrong to make money? If you were a banker and I came to you with my business plan and said, eh, making money is optional, I probably would not be approved. So in closing, I think it's hard to find a more benign neighbor. There's no odor, no noise, no traffic or farm vehicles on the road, no chemicals or manure stacked up. It uses less water and produces tax revenue and power for thousands of people. So I respectfully ask that you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, just question, go ahead.
You know, when we have these contentious public hearings, we hear a lot of, lot of different arguments. And I think we've probably gotten pretty good at knowing that people are going to throw out every argument they got, and we can kind of recognize what's compelling and what's not. And we've heard some good arguments, and I think some pretty weak arguments. But the one that I think keeps coming back to me, the, maybe the overall issue, is the idea that it's sort of changing the character of the community and really the views and the aesthetics of it, that it's just not something that's appropriate for the community. Can you maybe address that particular issue?
Yes. I wish I'd have done this ahead of time, but I did take some pictures on my cell phone. From the city of Melba, from city council, or from the city hall, I took pictures, you can't even see the Butte. I went a mile north, can't see the Butte. Went two miles north, you can see the very tippy top of the Butte. There's homes, my son's home is one of them, bordering that ridge. They cannot see it out their window, because it's on the top of the hill. So if anyone can see it, it's going to be above these houses from this, coming from the south looking north, and is a little tippy, just a little tippy part. Some of these people in this room that I know where they live, they have to look out their front window, step out onto the porch, and look two miles away to see it on the top of a ridge. To me, that is not ruining anyone's view or way of life. One of the people that spoke today, whose attorney spoke, their house is bordered by trees. They will not be able to see the solar panels, the desert of, whatever they called it, for the trees. They can't see any of it from their home, from any of their windows. So I don't think it impacts people as much. I think there's been so much hysteria, and it's fomented, and we're printing T-shirts, and we're all together as a community. We've had some deaths in our community that didn't get as much attention. So to me, it's just a little hysterical.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Rebecca Rutan. I'm a resident of Melba. I'm also an agricultural real estate appraiser. I hold the accredited rural appraiser designation from the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers. From an appraiser's standpoint, and this is no way a talk about land values, but I'd like to talk about the zoning and the highest and best use analysis in the appraisal process. There's four criteria that you have to meet to, that funnel down to your highest and best use analysis, and then that determines the sales you would pull in and use. Those four criteria, a solar structure meets the agricultural criteria. You're not farming it, you're not raising a crop, you're not, it's the definition of the zoning that Ada County has designated for this area. So if this were to go in place, I think you're picking one commodity over another. It's not all dire and gloom in agriculture. Yes, we may have the energy to turn our ovens on, but if we don't have the food to put in it, what's the point? So, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Back to your evaluation of highest and best use. Solar farms, houses, businesses, there are...
Could be multiple things. But it changes the designation that would fit the zoning. So it's no longer agriculture. So, so when you look at legally permissible, you have to, it has to be physically possible, financially feasible, maximally productive. But if you change one, then you're doing a, as-will-be appraisal. So legal, then you could do an appraisal and funnel down your highest and best analysis of what it could be. That's called an as-will-be appraisal, or highest. So you have current, what is, you have what as, what it could be in the future with your hypothetical conditions, extraordinary assumptions, things like that. But they have to meet...
Sure. Go ahead.
We had somebody previously mention, I think, a study out of Rhode Island regarding solar farms' effect on housing prices, prices in the surrounding areas. Have you done any research on whether or not these types of solar projects affect home values?
I have not appraised a solar farm. I, so I can't, we don't have any around here that impact our markets, not yet anyway. So I can't speak to that. I've looked at studies. There's been some things that the American Society for Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers have put out, some journal documents. They're in the Midwest, that's a different market than out here, but I can't speak to Rhode Island.
So you can't say universally they will affect housing prices?
I don't know. Each subject property is site-specific, so, you know, like the other gentleman said, each land, each piece of land is different. So you can't compare apples and oranges. You need to have apples to apples. So there's other factors in that market, right? Their terrain is different, they have trees that block more of the view shed than what we have out here. It's different. So I would be hesitant to say that just because it didn't affect home values in another state, that it would be the same here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Pac Van Der Schu?
Can you repeat? What was that?
Okay, it's a, Deck or Pac Van Der Chef?
I apologize for my bad penmanship. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Derek Van Der Skoff, and I am located at thirty-six, thirty-three West Green Lane, and I run to family farm is located on the grasslands property. And today I will be speaking on a letter that was submitted for written testimony. The letter mentioned, addresses in previous testimony, that a claim was made that there were no interested parties for the proposed property. This was because of the poor soils, and they were selling this ground to solar due to that hardship. I would like to dispute this, as I know that is a very productive and good ground with excellent water. I hope, I happen to know our family is actually an interested party in this ground if it was to come for sale. I also know that there are several other neighbors who are farmers, who would be interested in this property if it were to come for sale, to keep it as prime farm ground. My dad, Ted Van Der Skoff, the owner of our dairies, went out and obtained eighteen signatures from these qualified individuals and have included them in a written submission. Neither my family nor the eighteen individuals who make up the list in my hand knew that this ground was for sale when it was put under contract, but they would be interested if it should be, should come available. I also have a list here for you that states that Savion's agrivoltaiac plan is not workable. These eighteen people have three hundred and seventy-nine collective years, over twenty-seven thousand acres in the immediate area. The issue with this is not on the price of this space, but it is on the availability and opportunity to buy it. I have printed copies of these signatures in my hand and can provide them for you if you would like. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of these facts. I am opposed to the Power Butte solar project and ask that you would deny their application. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead.
I don't think there's anything stopping you or anyone else from making an offer to the Buses, is there?
Um, I would say mostly availability or opportunity. We didn't really know about it until it was under contract. So within these, these signatures, there are people that are interested within this, this property, and I am only eighteen. I can't make an offer, but I'm sure my family would love to make an offer. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like these?
Our staff can take those from you if we want to put them into the record.
Slides up for some visuals that I would like for my presentation, but I would like...
Get right to the microphone.
Sorry, what?
Get right to the microphone.
Oh, the Birds of Prey Conservatory is the greatest concentration in nesting birds of prey in North America and shares a one-point-two-mile border with this property. Swanson's hawks, red-tailed hawks, and Savion's own reports even showed other birds like turkey vultures. But they were unable to look at about six hundred and forty acres, which included more nests that they were not able to look at. This, these acreage were leased, but I can come back to this picture, I'm sorry, I won't be able to get to it. But on my second and third slide, there's some photos of birds that we were able to shoot on the property. And on the fifth slide includes pictures of golden eagles that have been spotted this year and in the years past that neighbors found. And this, not only are these birds on the property, but the solar farm poses a large risk to them. In the BLM study of six solar farms, fifty-four percent of the fatalities were collision-related and can, some may be attributed to the lake effect. And larger facilities could produce a nonlinear increase in avian mortality, especially when biological production is decreased or large landmass is removed. Savion's own statements use the term "properly sited," and I wanted to research what properly sited meant. According to my sources, which were primarily .gov websites, especially BLM, properly sited facilities should be areas that have the least resource conflicts, ones that are not sited next to habitats of birds of prey and migration pathways, and that avoid sites that, well, avoid sites that would cause a large biological or farm, loss of farm ground, which can be used as hunting grounds for these birds, and also avoiding areas that... near rare or endangered species such as golden eagles, these are rare species, or birds who have long-term vulnerabilities. I submitted a research paper that you're welcome to look at, but I am opposed to this specifically. I would like you to deny it because of the requested variance that research states that the large solar projects should be sighted away from rare and federally protected species, and allowing this variance goes against research for properly cited installations. Could we get to slide five as well? These were taken a picture by a neighbor. They're from the federal viewer reclamation, so all of the photos on these slides have been verified. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dustin Van Der Skoff.
Dear Commissioners, my name is Dustin Van Der Skoff. My family is the current tenant of the Grasslands property located inside the proposed site. This is where I believe that I would, I believed I'd be working for the coming year in the future, but today I could lose that opportunity and it would be a major loss to my family. I believe the conversion of this ground to solar is also a major loss to the community. And with that, I would like to start my video. This video is just like a little tour of the property, and it kind of shows you the view. One of the main rebuttals with the whole you can't see the beaut is because it's so low, but pretty much anything in the distance you can see here, they can probably see us. All this farm ground with the pivots were just planted to corn, and so they are currently being used for farming. As you can see there, that's the distance. We're looking north. Pretty much everything out there would see the solar farm and the possible glare. Still looking north, got Nampa and Meridian in that direction. In the distance, you can see the Boise foothills. They're about 20 miles away, but even with that 20 miles, you can still see it. After this, we're going to show you some photos. They're all taken on the Grasslands property and show some landmarks that aren't that far away from it. Or, this is a little 360. This is all farmable ground. There's, nothing goes to waste. All of these measurements are a straight line as crow flies. These were all taken on-site. This is the LDS church. That's St. Alphonsus Medical Center. That is the Reynolds Dairy Silos and the Kuna City Water Tower.
All right, if you could wrap it up.
Yeah. As you can see, the conversion of this farm ground out of productive agriculture will be a huge loss. And remember, if we can see them, they can see us. I ask you to please deny this application and preserve our farm ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla Van Der Skoff.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kayla Van Der Skoff. I live at 3633 West Green Lane, and my family farms and rents on the Grasslands property located within Savion's project area. Today I wanted to talk to you...
Is that microphone in front of your mouth a little bit more?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm short. Today I wanted to talk to you about public safety. Savion has proposed that they will graze sheep under the solar panels. They have mentioned using a sheep herder who also currently grazes sheep at the solar installation located off of South Cloverdale Road. Yesterday, my sister stopped by there on her way home and took some pictures for me. I have those here to show you if you want them. Do you want them? Before diving into these pictures, I want to mention that wildfire is no stranger to these areas. As recently as July 6, the Swanee Fire broke out and consumed an estimated 100, well, 1,150 acres. Although the cause of fire is not currently known, this fire came within 1.5 miles of the Cloverdale Solar Installation. Now, looking at these pictures, you can see what the solar installation looks like today. If Savion uses the vegetation practice which they have proposed for Powers' But, Powers' But will look nearly the same. You'll notice how much fire fuel there is available and how dry it is. These weeds are shoulder-high on the sheep and are even taller on the roadside of the fence. If Powers' But intensities, the same practices are used at the Cloverdale Solar Installation, this is a huge safety hazard to all the houses and those who live in the area. Just this past spring, my family had a tract fire on the Grasslands property. It took over 20 minutes for fire to respond, for the firefighters to respond. Even then, Melba was unable to take the call, and Kuna was all who showed up. Imagine this, a fire on Powers' But property with this much fuel to burn and a delayed response due to Melba's volunteer fire department. This is a huge risk for those who live nearby. Because of this, I respectfully ask you to deny this application.
Okay, questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I got to put them in the record order. Okay, Kyle Singler, Shingler.
I oppose.
Kirsten Van Der Skoff.
Hello, Commissioners. I just have a couple pictures that I wanted her to pull up before I started, if you don't mind. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kirsten Van Der Skoff. I reside at 3633 West Green Lane, Kuna, Idaho. I'm opposed to the Powers' But Solar Project conditional use permit proposed by Savion. I will only be speaking on the topic of ground and soil issues that could come with the approval of the permit. According to the written submission that I provided under the name Information on Ground, Soil of Proposed Savion Powers' But Solar Project, the proposed solar project according to UC Davis, which are reinforced by USDA.gov, is comprised of prime farmland in the majority. The picture that I would like to display shows the proposed borders of the project indicated that prime farmland is in green and not prime farmland is in red. Within the categories of prime farmland, there are prime farmland of statewide importance if irrigated, marked in green. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Prime farmland if irrigated in blue, prime farmland if irrigated and reclaimed of excess salts and sodium in purple, and once more, not prime farmland in red. As of now, the majority of the project land is irrigated and reclaimed of salts and sodium, putting it well within the bounds of being considered prime farmland. Unfortunately, Savion has disclosed no plan of irrigation. Although they have a loose plan of using pollinator plants, having no plan of irrigation results in not only problems with the soil reverting back to desert, soil erosion's problems due to no soil coverage, but most importantly, having no irrigation plan jeopardizes the grounds designated as defined by USDA's as prime farm ground. Void of irrigation, this land ceases to be prime farmland and violates Ada County Code, which protects prime farmland. The Ada County ordinance that is referenced within my paper is 8-2A-1. Since it's already been mentioned tonight, I won't go into any details. However, I hope that the information I provide within my written statement makes an argument that the prime farmland will not be protected and that these statements would be violated. I ask that the Commissioners deny the Powers' But project based on the verbal research that I have given you and also the research provided in my written assessment. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooke Leo Taylor.
We have no testimony.
What?
We have, Commissioners, we have no testimony of this type.
Okay. David Reynolds.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Reynolds, 4649 West King Road, Kuna. First-generation farmer. We farm around 2,000 acres, 12 different crops, including seed crops, sugar beets, mint, and a lot of feed crops. We run a dairy. We're about two miles from this project. I question the value of replacing a natural resource that's theirs in farm ground with a man-made one when there's truly miles of transmission line that goes through the open desert. I really question the validity of that, truly. The jobs produced by this ground, I think, would be similar to my own. I talked to Ted Van Der Skoff a little bit to get a little bit of research, but there's a thousand cow dairy that's there. Land and dairy would be roughly 30 jobs. If you use amalgamated sugars, research back 10 years ago, there was about a 5X multiplier for economic impact on raw farm products. If you move to the production, you'd be around $5 million of milk a year, $3,600 worth of crops, 8.6 million of farm gate value. If you take a 3X, that's 25 million into this valley. If you take a 5X, it's 43 million. I heard the Harney County guy was quoting 7X, and I, it's up to debate, I'm sure. To address the suitability of the ground, I'm sure NRCL helped fund some of these pivots that are on this ground, and if it couldn't grow crops, there wouldn't be pivots on that ground. And personally, I've harvested some really fine beets off part of this farm probably 10 years ago for a neighbor, with a neighbor. I wonder, as taxpayers and ratepayers, are we responsibility, are we responsible for the duplicity of building a natural gas turbine plant to cover when this solar farm does not work? As I understand, that natural gas plant on New Plymouth is basically that power has is really for that purpose. It's sitting there ready to fire when solar and the wind does not work, because we all are not happy when those lights don't work and electricity's not there. I had another question, is if this entity is bonded, I mean, if they go bankrupt in 30 years, 40 years, and they disappear, is the county or whoever has this ground, are we responsible for that cleanup in that bill? So, is there a bond in place that covers that eventual ality? And to bring a little levity for the whole proceedings, I got a T-shirt that says, "Farmers, somebody has to feed your people." Thanks. So, any questions?
Yeah, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Bill Graham. Okay, that concludes the number of people that have signed up.
Oh, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, there might be a back page, Commissioner. Did you see a back page on one of those? Oh, yeah, there's, excuse me, excuse me, I didn't see the back page. There is a back page. I don't think there's any more back pages. No, no, there's not. I apologize. I didn't see the back page. Okay, A. Jones. Okay. L. Jones. Lawrence Klausen. Kayla Yost. Lisa Jorni.
I oppose.
Jerice De Vries.
I oppose.
Brandy Holliday.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm gonna do a patchwork quilt version of my notes, as some of those topics have already been covered. One of the things I wanted to touch on was that the Powers' But is picking and choosing who they're notifying. For example, residents adjacent to the legal notification zone are not being notified, while residents 10 miles away, for example, like Angie Tillman, who lives 660 feet from the project, was not notified, while the residents at 2426 South Sienna Drive, 10 miles away, were notified. I'm gonna move on to another thing. And also, you know, Idaho has 52 million acres, about 11 million acres of that is farm, ranch, dairy land, and out of that, that 21 million of it is forest land, that leaves about 19 million and change acres of desert such land. Let's say we take out some homes in some areas of that, maybe that leaves 10 to 15 million worth of land, and I would propose that we would put the solar there instead. And that is from a recent study done in 2023 to 2024. One other patchwork note in here was about cleaning the solar panels. You know, with the dust and the wind and the things out there, how are they gonna maintain the equipment long-term and keep it clean and dust-free? And what will the supervision be on that project? And the last thing that I have is the Fred Beck Real Estate Value in referencing to value located near solar farms, and this is a study that just came out last week. That's what I have.
All right, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Page. Darren Page. Robert Fisher. Deborah Fisher. Scott Robinson.
I already spoke.
Okay.
I'll speak again.
No, I just remember, I saw that name that you had, but there could be two Scots, but there's not. Okay, now, I've looked at all the back pages and all the front pages.
Couple we know of. I signed up on May the 8th. You hadn't called my name yet.
You signed up online?
No, in person.
What's your name?
Josh Cook. Also, make sure my name was on the list.
Okay, well, go ahead. You can speak.
Okay. Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead. You got three minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Josh Cook. I reside at 6712 State Coach Road, Nampa. Under Chapter 4 of the Comprehensive Plan P4.03.01, Land Use and Community Design, quote, designate area that may be appropriate for industrial, commercial, and residential land use while protecting and conserving farmland and national resources. P4.05.02, consider development on poor soil that would not interfere with valuable agricultural operation in the area, end quote. Under Ada County Code, CUP, Section 8-5B-5, required finding state, quote, "The proposed use shall not create undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties," end quote. Savion is aware that this project is devaluing adjacent residential properties, which is the reason for the Good Neighbor Agreement. That's right, which clearly says, quote, "Owners shall not oppose or object to any approval sought by company or its..." sought by company or its affiliates. An owner shall cause all of owner's related parties, including owner's spouse, not to oppose or object to any approval sought by company or company's affiliates. In the exchange of, company shall deliver to owner a one-time lump sum payment in an amount equivalent to the installation of a residential solar system," end quote. I am a licensed real estate broker in Idaho. I have done my own analysis and talked with four appraisers, one which I have a written statement from. We all agree that a commercial-sized solar would have undue adverse impacts on adjacent properties. I know the applicant has a non-bias appraiser working for them. It's plainly clear, the only person that are, only people that are in favor of the project or remain silent are getting some kind of financial benefit, bribe, or incentive. How could we ever believe that their appraiser from North Carolina is non-bias when the company is offering me compensation to be in favor of the project? Commissioners, if they are willing to lie about that, then what else are they lying about? If I'm tracking this correctly, there has already been a larger project approved in the county for the same company with no opposition. That goes to show you, commissioners, the room is not filled with people who are against solar energy. It's filled with residents who this project is going to adversely impact. The only reason for this location is to line the pockets of the investor at the expense of all these fine people's livelihood. So commissioners, before you make a motion on this project, would you please be kind enough to consider your constituents' financial burden this would impede on their most expensive purchase of their life?
Okay, any questions?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Did you say you had statements from four appraisers saying that this would affect the price of houses?
No, I didn't say I had a statement from four. I have spoke with four, I have a written statement from one.
And did you enter that into the record?
No, sir, but I would like to.
You, you can enter that tonight. So what, what did the statement say?
Would you like me to read it?
No, just summarize, you know, as far as, as far as potential to devalue the surrounding properties.
There was not a number. There was not a number or percentage in his statement, but his statement clearly states, which I said in my testimony, it would have undue adverse impact.
And the undue adverse impact is the reduction of property value?
It would, that's right. It would limit the people who would want to purchase or live beside a commercial-sized solar facility. That being said, that limits your buying power. You're buying pool, you're selling power. So that would affect your property value.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Well, Josh, I did find your name, I'm sorry, we, I overlooked one name.
You mean, you mean, commissioners, no one has a question about this company? I mentioned it in my testimony.
I know, you, I did hear you talk about it in your testimony, yeah, but.
I thought there would be questions about that. Also.
That's fine, you can do that.
And also, a letter of intent to speak in favor to have the right to graze livestock on the property.
Okay, you can enter that in the record?
Yeah, we got another one here.
How many has, has signed up but didn't get a speaks? Come up here in the front row and sit right in front row and we'll, we'll hear from you. That wants to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I've sat here from start to finish, or almost near finish, mostly to sit with an open mind, hear everybody's perspective.
Could you give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Heather Pingatour, I live at 9075 South Greenhawkerd. I'm here and he is not. He is the better public speaker, so you're stuck with me, I'm sorry. There will be some redundancy here, but I think that the redundancy is merited in order to impress some, "Thank you, I love it here, and I'd like to see it stay the way that it is." In 2013, because of my, my job nature, I was that once they were made, they couldn't be put back in the box. And part of the reason, when I talked with my employer and said, "I'm sorry, I can't stay here anymore," part of the reason we chose Idaho was because Idaho seemed to make decisions differently. And so I'm here to encourage you to continue making decisions differently. We chose Kuna because it's, the cultural similarities are very similar to my hometown of Backesville, Pennsylvania. The empathetic neighbors as well. And I've heard some things earlier tonight as far as those who were for the proposal that weren't very empathetic, that there would be no risk here and that none of the neighbors would be negatively impacted by a solar, I'm not gonna call it a farm, I'm offended by that. I'll call it a facility, a system, a factory. It's not a farm, it does not fit the purpose of the land. And to be not empathetic to the neighbors in the community is a shame. I have driven cross-country several times, I have driven up and down the West Coast several times, I have passed my fair share of solar fields. There's no time I can ever say, gee, that's pretty, I'd love to live near it, ever. I am a contract negotiator, it's my job to rip apart studies, so I didn't bring you any studies tonight. I can tell you that power of observation, by running lots of searches online, when you run the impacts of a facility like this, the pros out, the cons outweigh the pros. The harm, the risk outweighs the positive. All the way down to the comment made about fencing this facility in to protect livestock or protect the animal, the wild la, wildlife, when you run searches, and I'll wrap up with this, the number-one damaging factor is imbalancing the ecosystem. I'm so proud of the young lady that put Birds of Prey up here, we enjoy seeing the golden eagles in our backyard. We know that when you run searches on these solar facilities, it is very common for birds to be incinerated in midair. Fences don't fix that. That's one thing to take into consideration. I just ask that you think very hard about this, I firmly oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Give us your name and address.
I'm Adrian Ferdinand, and I live at 5197 Happy Valley Road. And this directly impacts us, our front yard, our side yard, and our backyard. It's a place that we love, that we raise our kids on, so we're, we are opposed to this. I would like to address the dangers of toxic chemicals leaching into the ground and into our aquifer from damaged solar panels. Damaged solar panels do happen. We have had massive storms in our valley with hail over one inch in diameter. These weather patterns happen in our area and they pose a definite risk to damaging solar panels. Here is a video that shows what happened to an industrial solar facility located in the Needville community near Houston, Texas. This clearly shows the risk that we would be facing. Please play the video.
Why is our internet always so slow down?
I don't know.
You can talk about all the other videos that are out there, not this one.
This is an important one, though.
Oh, something's happening.
Well, thousands, which is about an hour southwest of Houston, where absolutely
It's this plane, it's just.
Destroyed by last week's hail, we're following that for authority, and now residents are concerned about possible.
Can I pause it for just a second? Do you want to play it on here? Well, it's sort of working, but.
Chemical contamination. Fox 26's Randy Wallace is joining us now live with more.
Yeah, Anthony, now, there are several solar farms here in that Needville area spanning more than 10,000 acres. Some are up and running while others are under construction. Now, some residents were concerned before the solar panels even went up. It was a.
It's in the paper presentation. It's called Debbie Davis. You press Control on this circuit, that seems to work. No, it's just Control, click that. I can try one more time on this one while you work on that there. Oh, it's ready? Okay, perfect.
The Needville area, which is about southwest of Houston, were absolutely destroyed by last week's hail, we're following that for you as our Gulf Coast Weather Authority, and now, an hour southwest of Houston, were absolutely destroyed by last week's hail, we're following that for you as our Gulf Coast Weather Authority, and now residents are concerned about possible chemical contamination. Fox 26's Randy Wallace is joining us now live with more.
Yeah, now, there are several solar farms here in that Needville area spanning more than 10,000 acres. Some are up and running while others are under construction. Now, some residents were concerned before the solar panels even were.
It was a hailstorm like we've never seen before?
The 4,000-acre solar farm around Nick Kaminsky's Needville area home took a beating. What did you think when you first saw this?
I was shocked.
You were worried about the environmental impact of this before it was ever here?
That is correct, I was worried about it.
Nick showed us email, he said, before the solar farms were built, he asked Fort Bend County Commissioners, the Fort Bend Economic Development Council, and the owner of Fighting Jay's Solar Farm, the environmental impact study.
We asked for the same studies and we treated the same way. We got nothing out of them.
My concern is with the hail damage that came through and busted these panels up, we now have some highly toxic chemicals that could be potentially leaking into our water tables.
There's numerous makeup in the chemicals on this thing, and majority of them are cancer-causing.
Hello? We have to talk to someone fighting Jay's Solar Farm? We haven't heard back yet. In a way, this is kind of your worst nightmare come true.
It is. I have a family, I have two children and a wife, my neighbors have kids, and a lot of other residents in the area who are on well water, or the chemicals are now leaving, leaking into our water tables.
So we've got livestock that have to drink it, and we have to bathe, drink, you know, all that stuff, so it's, it's a big concern.
Now, residents in the area are having the water wells tested, the Fort Bend County hazmat team also collected samples. Of course, those test results are pending. Reporting live from Needville, Randy Wallace, Fox 26 News.
Thank you for your time, commissioners, and I encourage you to strongly take this into careful consideration in denying the power plant in the center of our community and on our farmland. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, we have, go, go ahead, give us your name and address.
My name's Michael Schankel, and I live at 7255 Stagecoach Road, and I just want to be on record as opposing this project.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, I think that concludes, everyone. I did find where I read your names, you may have been out of the room, or, I mean, I didn't say it loud enough, but I did read your name and, and Ms. Ferdinand's name. Okay, is there, we need to, to provide for a, the applicant to give him, that company a rebuttal time, so the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal if they're, are they here? Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
Are we ready?
Yep, go ahead.
For our thing to come up?
I wanna see if this is the right one or not. It looks like it's the old one.
Well, we attached the old one to the new one.
Oh, okay.
So there's new slides at the beginning, it's only four slides.
Let me share this, make sure that it's right.
It has the new data.
Is it this one?
Nope.
You wanna look at this real quick? I'll share it and you can tell me if this is it, or if I need to pull it up on laptop or something. I need to see it? I thought, I put this one as applicant, but it looks like it's the old one. Well, I have it on your USB drive anyway, right? Yeah. That's it? Okay. Got it. Yeah. All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman Beck and the Ada County Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Kekaritz with Givens Persley, 601 Bannock Drive, Boise, Idaho. I'm land use counsel for Powers Butte, Savignan Energy, the applicant in this matter. With me tonight are members of Savignan, including the project development team, Mitchell Taylor and Emily Trubner. We also have one of our engineers, Lindsay Weisman here, as well as several experts who have submitted supplemental reports in this. Would like to start by saying thank you to Michaela and the rest of your planning staff, they've been great to work with, and they've really answered all of our questions and helped us work through issues as they arose. We were last here on May 8th, and since that time, the team has continued to have in-person discussions in small group settings, in one-on-one settings, and through broader groups. They're really committed to meeting with the community here. We've completed a series of additional reports that have been made available, and as I mentioned, we do have experts available to talk about them. How do we move forward? With everything we heard from you and the community, we really kind of tried to focus on several areas to get additional information and reports to answer your questions. The topics can really be broken down into a few key areas, prime farmland, decommissioning and wildlife, which really is sort of environmental concerns, and then health and safety. Just to run through these really quickly, preservation of ag land, to help answer questions about this, we provide both soil analysis and a vegetation management strategy, and have the authors of those reports here to speak, if you do have questions. First, as we've heard at length, the project is approximately in Ada County, 63% prime farmland. What is prime farmland? That's what we keep talking about, discussing over and over again. This 63%, it's, it's classified as Class 3E prime farmland, which is described as it's, it's classified as Class 3E prime farmland, which is described as soils that have severe limitation farmland because it's irrigated and it's only irrigated because of the hard work of the past and the current owners. As the former property owners or the ones that are currently the owners have, much of it is not ideal to farm despite its characterization as prime farmland. For this reason and because of the properties' close proximity to transmission lines in a rapidly growing area of Treasure Valley, describing the process by which perennial vegetation can be established and noxious weeds can be mitigated. We have Dustin Ward, who's a range scientist. If you have any questions on that, he's available to answer them. Also importantly, throughout this project lifespan, we can, moving on to some of the environmental effects, we've heard a lot about these different concerns with toxicity of panels, things of that nature. And so to the end, we have provided our draft decommissioning plan that provides details on how the project will be, but also the recycling of the chemicals and the minerals within the panels. We have, there's been a lot of questions about fire. Derek Post, who is with Fire Risk Alliance, has drafted a report that's also in your packet and he can answer questions about BES and fires and the dissipation of how quickly the gases dissipate into the air and the mitigation strategies that can be taken. Three different panels currently, they've all gone through extensive testing and they all fall well below.
Am I really through five minutes?
Five, they all fall well below the non-hazardous materials designation. Finally, what we'd really like to emphasize, we'll go to the last slide, is that this does meet all of the qualifications and requirements as a conditional use in Ada County. It's not detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan as we discussed at length last time. It complies with the purpose statement and there is no undue, undue adverse impact on the neighbors, the rest of them. And I could go into more detail on each of these, but they have been covered by others. We're reducing the irrigation, protecting the water table. There's increased setbacks, vegetative buffers, minimal traffic. It helps with the U.S. energy security. There's no emissions, no hazardous materials, no odor, no noise, no traffic. Solar facility is really an excellent neighbor in this area.
Okay, any questions?
We have lots of people here who'd love to answer some questions.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
I have several questions. One is the, the agreement, the first was introduced to us is the agreements that were presented to, to, could you, could you amplify, explain what, all of that?
I can touch on them briefly and then we have people here who could talk about them a little more. It's pretty common practice in these sort of arrangements and in, quite honestly, other large real estate transactions and developments to enter into agreements with the neighbors or even with the property owner itself. When a developer comes in to purchase the property to say, well, you're not going to, if we're going to do this, you won't come up and contest it. You're not going to fight against this. Those sort of agreements are pretty standard and they also regularly happen with neighbors to the project saying, yeah, we understand you're going to be put out a little bit. These will be here. These things do get contentious and so we'd like to talk to you about that some.
On these, this has been, been a very useful tool to speak one-on-one with neighbors and understand their particular concerns with these projects. A good opportunity to teach, to let them know what we're planning and express the areas where we can be very flexible in trying to adjust either where our project, project boundary is, where panels are, and reach an agreement one-to-one on one side of the fence versus the other. So they've been a tool to have that personal conversation and that, that is where all of these conversations have started, when we've had discussions around a good neighbor agreement. It is around that. It's trying to be a good neighbor. It's trying to be respectful of the person on the other side of the fence and figure out ways that we can address some of the things that are in our control, where we have excess land, how we can be respectful of those spaces, different types of fences that we can use, different types of mitigation between those fences, if the, in some cases, a certain kind of tree that goes in between those to make sure that it's something that they want to see. So it, it's really been a tool for that. And yes, some of them do have compensation associated with them, but in some cases, it's been in the form of a solar installation. It's trying to have them share in the win of us getting a project done in a more direct way on their home as opposed to something that is on the other side of the fence and impacts them in the form of property tax revenues and energy.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions?
I have some other questions. There's nobody else had any question?
No, well, go ahead.
The, the question on the land itself, why, why private land versus federal land or other government land?
We are open to many different forms of land. Our development process is built around three, three core principles. One, where is there a need for energy? Two, where is a place to interconnect that power? And three, where is land suitable for development? We can't do it on a mountain where slopes are too high. We can't do it in the middle of a city where there's lots of interconnection frequently, but there's not land to support it. So our projects need those couple of components to support it. In this case, the transmission and the need from Idaho Power drew us here and we had interested and willing landowners who wanted to participate in this project. And we're quite flexible in the types of structure. Sometimes landowners want to lease projects, lease the land to it. Sometimes they want to sell. In this case, and the reason why the land, this private property wanted to sell is because that was the landowner's choice.
Another question.
Go ahead.
The, the video they just shown, was that either one of your solar projects or, because you have major solar projects around the United States. Was that one of yours or did you have the same kind of experience on any of your solar projects? And if you did, what did you do to mitigate that?
There's a couple of different ways to mitigate it. One is locating in an area that's specifically labeled as hail alley and insurers recognize that as a part of Texas and Oklahoma that sees produce energy. And we know that we have products that, like as you saw in that video, if a rock hits your windshield, it doesn't shatter and collapse and it was not a hazard to health. It's unfortunate that that's happened to the project and therefore a lot of panel manufacturers have started to increase their hail rating so they can handle bigger than golf ball sized hail, bigger than an inch diameter hail. Panels can usually withstand, withstand that and we absolutely, they can get broken and they do need to be replaced, but they are not causing a danger to anyone's health, as is evident in the ECT report that we provided on panel toxicity.
And that report, which is now in your materials, they tested, they went through the comprehensive leaching process and they found that the three types of panels that they were, that they're looking at, all of the sort of scary sounding chemicals like cadmium and lead, they were all well, well under the government regulatory levels and are actually considered non-hazardous. So even if these panels were to break, they are not leaching any chemicals into the soil at levels that would ever be considered hazardous. These are considered non-hazardous chemicals and that has now been submitted to you guys. Or non-hazardous products with these trace amounts of the chemicals in them.
Another question.
Go ahead.
You're, you're a major company, so you've done this before and you're one of the major players. So the question that was asked in terms of, you've, you've addressed the decommissioning question, but the bonding question in terms of all of that going out of business and all of that, address that.
So as part of the, we're in final stages or the team is in final stages of negotiation with Idaho Power and as part of those agreements, they're required to provide a surety that's in excess of, to ensure that this project does remain up and viable. And I think Mitch can talk more about that as well.
Almost every, every single offtake agreement includes assurances that the project will remain operational at levels that match what this counterparty, in this case, Idaho Power, would want that project to be performing at. And that includes a bond to ensure that that project is operating, not just decommission, not just at 90%, at thresholds much higher than that. So we have maintenance teams, operations teams, warranties that all make sure that these projects are well supported to operate, not just for five, 10 years, 20, the entire time of that, that project in place. Idaho Power, as an example, would want to make sure that that power is there, available whenever the sun is shining and they can predict that very easy, very well with stations through that time and it's insured, it's bonded to guarantee that.
Thank you.
You got more? All right. You have any questions? Go ahead.
Is it possible that this project could still be profitable at a smaller scale?
The layout that we've shown and submitted in the record is a maximum potential impact based on the landowner, the neighbor concerns that have been raised in one-on-one discussions or setbacks. It is 2,385 acres. This, this project, at the amount that we can interconnect to this spot, does not require that much land. Where that land is has many different impact factors that weigh into it. And so what we've tried to present is the maximum impact that any residents would see from this project as to not change the visual impact of this project down the road. So what you see in panels is the maximum places that these panels could be placed. Really, we're expecting a project like this is not going to require all of that. But panels require acreage. We want to keep a good amount of spacing between each of them because each one of those panels doesn't shade one another and therefore reduce energy production. But we're still looking somewhere in the 1600, 1800 acres kind of range based on the project capacity that we can interconnect at this place. But where we pull that back, I've tried to do that with individual landowners and respecting fence lines and we can continue to explore that. But it, it will not be this entire acreage, but I absolutely do not want to come back when this project goes into construction and have panels somewhere that no one expected them.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of questions for you. One, the documents that were presented, you did offer compensation for positive testimony?
Offered a solar installation for a couple of homes that were immediately adjacent to be, to not oppose the project or to support it.
Okay, all right.
Again, in, in all of those discussions, what this has been oriented around is the other side of the fence and how can we be respectful of this? And that has been something that's been offered to a couple of individuals.
Okay. The other question I have is, in, in May at the hearing, you indicated that a big share of this project is in Canyon County and that all of the connections and the batteries and so forth are, are scheduled to be in Canyon County. You further then suggested that if Canyon County did not approve the project, you couldn't build it or wouldn't build it, correct?
I don't see a viable path to interconnecting a project without the Canyon County.
So that would be accurate then. And Canyon County, you, you've submitted an application?
That's correct. We submit an application in both counties at the same time because we have seen this as a shared project. We've tried to keep it as a similar application.
And what progress is being made on the Canyon County application?
We do not know when a planner is going to be assigned or what the hearing date is.
I beg your pardon?
We do not know what a hearing date is and we do not have a planner assigned at this moment.
They, it's our understanding they're trailing it behind this. There's Canyon County planners here tonight.
Oh, oh, that's fine. The, the other question that it's been, it's, I'm curious as to whether or not this project has ever been offered for sale to anybody.
The project as a whole has ever been?
Your project?
I'm not sure that I can answer that across broader company that we, I'm not, I don't, I don't.
You can just say yes or no.
I, I don't, I don't have that answer. I don't know.
I beg your pardon?
I don't know.
No. Okay. So, so you're not aware of any of that?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any further questions. Do you? Do you have any further questions? Okay, we have a number of documents that need to be added to the, added to the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a number of documents that needed to be added to the record and we've, we've received a substantial amount of documents in the last week or two weeks that have a lot of links and so forth. Did we get those prepared for, to make them part of the record?
And Chairman, Commissioner, everything prior to the hearing tonight is in the record and was provided either with the original report or part of the late exhibit memo and then we will add all of the other documents here tonight to the record.
Okay, so you have the other documents ready to add to the record if you'd like to do that now?
Yes, so we will be adding the presentations that we've received today as well as all of the physical documents that we've received. And I've gotten emails when a testimony included some documentation that they didn't have with them. I will be adding all of that as exhibits to the record after this.
So we will have a complete record then?
That's correct, Chairman.
Okay. I will then close the, the public hearing on application 2024-00163-V-CU-MSP. Hearing being closed, it's now in the hands of the, of the commissions. Is there comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I think we've given this a, a really good hearing, two hearings in fact. We've heard a lot of testimony both tonight and at the previous hearing. We've got a lot of evidence submitted, including a lot of new documents tonight, which I think it would be prudent to review, possibly have another meeting with our lawyers to, if we have any legal questions about this project. I have a couple of my own. And there was some, some interesting testimony that was presented tonight that I would like to look into and research a little bit more. So I'm just wondering, based on the lateness of the hour and the additional documents submitted, if it would be wise to table this so that we could do a thorough review and then reach a decision at a subsequent meeting.
Well, I would tend to agree with that. We have so much additional information that's been, that's been added that we, we really haven't had a chance to digest all the information and it's, 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 I think it's fair to both sides that we actually review all the information that's been presented and some of it, we just, it's been a blizzard to us. And so it's, it, it would be better, I think, if we did delay this for a while. I'm not sure how long, but we would need to have another, the hearing's closed. We're not going to have another hearing on this, but we could, we could schedule a different time to actually come to a decision.
I, I would concur with that and that was going to be my suggestion as well because just the additional information that we've received both tonight as well as now entered into the record, I think we need to, I personally need to have some time to review it.
Yeah, we all have assumed that. So plus we, I have, I have a couple of legal questions as well. So I think we need to, and we don't, we don't get legal advice in a public hearing. Our, our lawyer wants to give it to us in private setting. So with that, I would accept a motion to table this for, for, for a time certain in the future for, just for, for us to make a decision because we're not going to take any more, any more evidence. We're not going to take any more documents. We've got a lot of those already. I think we've got sufficient, but we do need to, need to, it's a, do a thorough review of this. And so I'd accept the motion.
Does staff have a?
Staff have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, if, and Commissioners, if you were interested in looking at an open business meeting, we'd probably suggest July 30th. Give you a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that should give us sufficient time to review everything. And that, that would be on a, on a Tuesday. Okay. I think that's good. I'd accept the motion.
Is, is that long enough time?
Well, I think, I think that's three weeks. That's, we should have enough time.
All right.
That's three weeks. If we don't, we can always table it again. But we can, but we can't, we will, we will make a decision at, at the next time we actually discuss it. So go ahead. You want to make a motion?
Sure. Well, before I do, I'll just, I'll thank everybody for showing up. I think this has probably been the busiest hearing when you combine the two days that we've had since, at least since I've been elected. We've had a couple of big ones, but this probably is the one that's generated the most interest. And I know it's, it's a lot to, to get through, you know, multiple hours and two different nights. Some people showed up at the first meeting, had to come back to this one. And I know a lot of people here obviously live about as far away from the courthouse as you can get. And I'm sure you probably don't want to go. And I'm sure you probably all want to get to bed because obviously, most of you are farmers and you got crops to tend to tomorrow. So I just wanted to thank everybody for a productive and a good hearing and I think everybody kept it respectful. So we appreciate that. With that, I'll make a motion.
August 30th? Yeah, July 30th at 9:00.
I'll move to table application number 202400163-V-CU-MSP to July 30th, 9:00. Is that suffice?
Chairman, that works, or Commissioners, yes, that works great.
Great.
I would second the motion and with that, I would also like to thank everybody who's here. The information that you've all shared is important to us. That's why we want to review it. I appreciate all the activity that's gone on in discussion of this. So thank you very much and I will second the motion.
Thank you. And I also would like to thank everyone for your, this has been an excellent hearing. I think it's been respectful and we do appreciate that. We've had some hearings that are not very respectful and this has been a respectful hearing, I believe. And I thank you for that, for the decorum that has existed throughout this, this hearing because I know emotions get high and feelings get, get real high. And so I do appreciate that. So thank you all for that and, and your interest. And anyway, with that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion to delay, to table this application until July 30th at 9:00. Without any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll be adjourned.